Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners meeting. Commissioner White, our chaplain, is stuck in traffic. So I'm going to give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance this morning. Player one, please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Our gracious in heaven, Father, we're so thankful that you touched us with your loving hands and awakened us to see another one of your beautiful days. Father, we're thankful that you allow us to come out today to work on behalf of this county, which I consider and I think many others consider one of the greatest counties in this country. Father, we ask that you be with us whether you're on this dais in the audience, that we can make those decisions and be on one accord. We ask that you regulate our minds and humble our hearts as we make these decisions. Father, we ask that you be with those that put their lives on the line for us each and every day, whether they're first responders or military uniform folks. We ask that you take them back to their homes when their duty is done to find everything safe and sound. When our work is done here today, we ask you to take us back to our homes to find everything safe and sound and within order. All these blessed we ask in your righteous and holy name. Before we get to the proclamations and commendations, I have something I'd like to read. Today is World Environment Day. In action to protect our environment on a global scale by acting loyally, locally, I'm sorry. In spite of the World Environment Day, I want to encourage, since being in spirit of the World Environment Day, I want to encourage everybody to do something to take care of the earth today. We make this easy in Hillsborough County through our Reduce Your Use Tampa Bay campaign. As part of this campaign, we encourage people to take the pledge to reduce waste for single-use plastics. Single-use plastics pose a major risk to the environment, especially the sensitive waters in the Tampa Bay region. Contrary to popular belief, many use single items like plastic straws, plastic bags, and polyurethane containers are not recyclable in residential curbside programs. A lot of these items find their way into our waterways. Simply put, we need to reduce our usage. If you want to be a part of the solution, just go online to reducereyouthampabay.org and take the pledge by selecting one actionable item that you will do today. I encourage you to share your experiences online using the hashtag #PollutionSolutionHC to help spread the word. Even small steps make a big difference when all of our efforts are put together. Again, go to reducereyouthampabay.org and take the pledge. Thank you for anything you can do today and take care of us. Let's take care of our environment. Okay, let's move into proclamations. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized for the first proclamation.
I'd like to invite to come up and join me here Kerry West and Mark Bias and also former county commissioner Kevin Beckner. And I'd like everybody to come up as we talk through this proclamation and celebration. I'd like to be joined by everyone and invite you all to come be part of this. Thank you all for being here. Pride Month celebrates the strength, the courage, equality, and dignity of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered people. Pride Month happens during June in 1960, because in 1969, 50 years ago, this month, in Greenwich Village in Manhattan, LGBT people protested, stood up for their rights, and catalyzed a movement we celebrate as Gay Pride. Part of the legacy of the heroes at Stonewall is the progress that's been made to promote the rights of LGBT persons throughout this country. At the time of the Stonewall uprising, LGBT Americans were routinely and often violently persecuted, wrongfully investigated, arrested, and discriminated against at all levels of government. In the 1960s, in Florida, the Johns Committee, led by a state senator, targeted LGBT students and professors at state universities, including right here in Tampa at USF. Over the years to come after Stonewall, great progress came, but at times it seemed to be one step forward, two steps back. Throughout all of this, the LGBT community persisted. I can remember back in June 2005, when I worked here at the county commission for then-commissioner, now Congresswoman Kathy Castor. I watched her cast the only no vote against a board policy that prohibited Hillsborough County from acknowledging, promoting, or participating in Gay Pride. My how things have changed. This movement was absolutely devastating. It was a terrible, terrible setback in this community. But the LGBT community and their supporters would not allow this to stand in Hillsborough County for long. Pride would prevail. Just three years later, in 2008, Kevin Beckner made history as the first openly gay member elected to the Hillsborough County Commission. Commissioner Beckner was a champion for LGBT rights. And six years ago today, on June 5th, 2013, Commissioner Beckner made a motion to reverse the county ban on Pride events. Thanks to Commissioner Beckner's advocacy and the strength and persistence of Hillsborough County's LGBT community, that policy was reversed. I can't believe this, six years ago today. After the policy was reversed, Kerry West and Mark Bias championed the effort once again to celebrate Gay Pride in Hillsborough County. Today, we stand in Hillsborough County in support of Pride. In addition to this proclamation, a request has been added to today's agenda by Commissioners Overman and Miller to raise the rainbow flag at this building in honor of Hillsborough County's LGBT community and to mark this important anniversary. I thank them for that request and it will have my full support. Now the proclamation, in the spirit of Pride, now with this, I invite everyone here today, anyone else who'd like to join us, to come forward at this time. My two wonderful aides, Raquel Valdez and Laura Lawson. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT Pride Month is celebrated nationwide each year in the month of June. And whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the uprising that took place at the Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York, 50 years ago, this month, on this morning of June 28th, 1969, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBT rights movement. And whereas it's important during this month to take time to reflect on the LGBT rights movement, and whereas it is fitting that several major United States Supreme Court decisions impacting LGBT rights in a positive way have been announced in June, including Lawrence versus Texas in 2003, US versus Windsor in 2013, Obergefell versus Hodges in 2015, and Pevon versus Smith in 2017. And whereas despite this extraordinary progress, LGBT Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas in Hillsborough County stands with the LGBT community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all and to defend and advocate for LGBT rights as human beings. And whereas after the June 12th, 2016, mass shootings at the Pulse, an Orlando nightclub, communities throughout the nation came together to honor the victims of the tragedy, which included 49 people who were killed and 53 others who were wounded. And whereas Hillsborough County and area cities are now partners with Tampa Pride, and whereas Hillsborough County will continue to be a county where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect, now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare June 2019 as LGBT Pride Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents and visitors to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and to recognize and respect those who are dedicated to providing a safe and inclusive community in Hillsborough County. And would you like to say a few words?
I'll say a few.
Go for it.
All right. Thank you all, the Commissioners, you know, and everybody that recognizes that Tampa is a growing area, Hillsborough County is also a growing area. This happens to be the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, and it also is the 40th anniversary that my partner of 42 years, Mark Bias, and I have been in Hillsborough County. And also, it's the fifth year for Tampa Pride and bringing Pride back to the community and also of Hillsborough County. That's, I thank you. With that saying, I want to just say that Hillsborough County is very important in the fact that three years ago during the Pulse, they had the county and many of the leaders and also the Hillsborough County Fire Department and City of Tampa Fire Department ladders went and performed a vigil that we took part in that brought in over 7,000 people in downtown in the Ebor City area. That is also on site with music, the drone, and all the showings of that Pulse. But Orlando is our sister city, and we go back and forth and we're so close. But that just happens to be one of the things. Now we're going to be very proud and going to be very honored from Hillsborough County that Tampa and also the Tampa Pride Organization is going to be featured on ABC nationally on the New York City and World Pride Day, that we will be number 11 in the front of the parade, showing and showcasing Hillsborough County up at New York City for the World Pride Day. So thank you very much for everybody. They have many organizations here. I mean, we are supportive, not of just the gays and lesbians, and we have bisexual and transgenders, and we have a lot of allies. The A stands for allies and associates. Now, we have members that are strictly and members that have either gay children, our gay brothers and uncles, sisters, and/or relatives, and they take part. It's not just going in inclusive organizations, it's very expansive. And then one of the biggest things I want to showcase that we do at Pride is that we have 44 different health organizations from the hospitals here of City of Tampa that come and showcase and give free health care to the people with over 60,000 people in five years have now are coming and enjoying tourism and enjoying Hillsborough County as they come at the last week of March. I greatly appreciate that. I welcome everybody to do that. And again, I can't believe that we're going to be having, again, three years ago when we were talking about having the raising of the flag, and it happened. The rainbow flag is very significant to the community and also to all the residents of the LGBT, and we are progressive. We are, as Commissioner Les Miller just said, yes, we are the greatest county in the country. Thank you on my behalf, and thank you very much. We do have a little presentation for you, just a second. Commissioner Kemp, we have for you the rainbow flag, and for all the Commissioners, for be raised, brand new, in the package. How's that? Still in the package. And also, our one that we have down here, which is showcasing what we have out here, is also, if there's room, or else just hang it, this, I grab the floor, I grab the side. There you go. This was the total proud sponsorship because Hillsborough County sponsored Tampa Pride, and it's our milestone of era, and we welcome and thank you again. We're presenting you with the Pride 5th Anniversary Limited Edition Flag. How's that? Thank you all, Commissioners.
Is there anyone else who wants to say?
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And Commissioners, it's an honor to be here and, you know, especially to see the progress that we've made as an entire community. I remember when I was first elected in 2008 and when we went to actually put forward a proclamation in 2009, the controversy that just a simple proclamation like we're presenting today caused. And in fact, I can remember the challenge and the difficulty of just getting a couple of the Commissioners to actually sign a proclamation. And anything that would appear on the agenda that would be LGBT would typically stack this room with people in opposition. Of course, we also had people in the community that was out to support it, but it's just amazing the progress that we have made as an entire community. And it's really a thanks to the resolve that we have of our advocates here and of everybody realizing that we're just part of the community. The LGBT is just part of the culture and the fabric of our community, and all we want is acceptance and to be loved by others and just to become an important part of this community. And so it's just great to see this progress. And it's also great to see on the agenda that an item to actually raise the Pride flag, we did that three years ago, and we came back in a subsequent meeting in July. And unfortunately, I wanted to establish a permanent raising of the flag to celebrate Pride Month, and also not only to celebrate Pride Month, but to remember that there are so many people that are oppressed in our community and that suffer hate crimes, as that we witnessed at the Pulse shooting. And so we wanted to make part of that a memorial to make sure that we never forget that while all we've made so much progress, there's still a lot of work to be done, and there's still discrimination that not only goes beyond words, but also goes beyond harming other people. And so I'd ask the Commission to just not simply raise the flag for the month of June, Commissioner Kemp, but I hope as part of the motion and the discussion that you'll make this a permanent part of the county's celebration of Pride and also establish a memorial service and recognition for those people that are victims of hate crime. So again, I thank all the Commissioners. I thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for bringing this forward and recognizing that we've made so much progress, but we have so much work to do. So thank you all for what you do on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Oh, sure, of course.
So I'm Nancy Desmond, and in addition to being a part of Tampa Pride, my husband and I are the founders of P-Flag Tampa, parents, families, and friends of the LGBTQ+ community. My son is gay. So on behalf of my family and the tens of thousands of families across Hillsborough County who have LGBTQ+ loved ones, we thank the Board. This is, we thank you for your visible show of advocacy. This is so important to us. Thank you.
Thank you all for all your remarks, and we'll move back and, I'm sorry. This is truly an inclusive community.
Yes, it is. Hi, I'm Mark Eri. I am the Vice President of Tampa Pride, and I want to thank all the Commissioners for this proclamation and the continuation of it. And that's all I really wanted to say, and I have little gifts for all of them.
Thank you all so much. I think we're, okay? We're not finished here.
My name is Walter Panellis. I am the President of the Gay Board District Coalition in Ebor City, and I just want to thank as well the Commissioners for the proclamation, for recognizing the LGBT community and that we are all one community, and thank you so much.
And before I, anyone else? Okay, let's move back and take a picture.
I think we need the big flag back too, right?
Yeah. We got the rainbow flag on the other one. You got it right.
My goodness, he's so tall.
Actually, can you put, Kevin, can you hold it for us? You're all good, we're right behind you.
Good morning, thank you, and again, congratulations to the LGBTQ community. Thank you. This is exciting today because we get to celebrate the 100th anniversary of Easter Seals, and what a better occasion to have him come to the county commission to be recognized. I'd like to invite Bill Merchant. He is the Senior Director of Development. Also attending is Kate Brumel, Catherine Cyaney, sorry, Jen Siperman, Dory Marlin, and this is a good one, Robin Roberts. He's the real Robin Roberts here. Come on, come on up. As you all know, Easter Seals, everybody knows Easter Seals. It has been such a legacy that you leave in every community of helping children and families that have disabilities in our community, that you provide just exceptional services, outreach, education, advocacy. And locally, they do that primarily through team parenting programs, military respite programs, and of course, they have their Murray Child Development Center, which is well-known by everybody. So I'm just very excited and pleased to present this commendation to you, and I'll read it and I'm going to present it to you, Bill.
Certainly.
Okay, great. The commendation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Easter Seals on the occasion of its 100th anniversary, a century of advocating for the rights of children and adults with disabilities. Founded in 1919, Easter Seals has evolved from humble beginnings in Ohio into a thriving network of 73 nationwide chapters, in addition to international partners in Australia, Mexico, Puerto Rico, and Canada. The nonprofit organization has proven to be steadfast in delivering high-quality services to help more than 1.4 million children, adults, and military veterans with disabilities. Partnering with public and private sector organizations, Easter Seals profoundly changes lives. It provides and connects individuals and families to early childhood education, intervention services, employment assistance, transportation solutions, mental health services, and caregiving and aging support. After 100 years, Easter Seals continues its unwavering commitment to service, honoring the vision of its founder Edgar Allan, who stated, 'Your life and mine shall be valued not by what we take, but by what we give.'" And the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Easter Seals as it celebrates 100 years of providing love and care to those who face disabilities and wish it many more years of success." And I'm so pleased to present this to you. Would you like to say a few words?
In respect to time, the one thing most of all is thank you to everyone and all involved with our organization, for those that are here in attendance, for Commissioners as well. And we encourage, we encourage, we encourage, if you're interested in seeing us more, come visit us. I'd love to give you a tour of the wonderful work that we're providing at our Murray Child Development Center. So thank you again very much.
Great, please take a picture.
Certainly.
Mr. Merrill, change to the agenda.
We have one addition, F6, which is a joint item brought by Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Overman, to request to recognize the LGBTQ Pride Month by flying the rainbow flag throughout the month of June 2019 at the Frederick B. Carl County Center. We have one deferral, which is G2, that's the monthly report from the Department of Head Start, Early Head Start, that's being deferred to June 19th. We have one item that's been removed from the agenda by Commissioner Kemp, A27, that's to approve a master energy consulting agreement with TECO Partners for consulting services related to the purchase and transportation of natural gas. We have a number of time certens, we have three public hearings beginning at 10:00 a.m. D1 is a public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Consolidated Impact Fee, Impact Assessment Program ordinance to update the fire service impact fee schedule. D2 is conducting a public hearing to consider adopting by a supermajority vote a proposed ordinance to levy an additional 1% tourist development tax. Public hearing D3 is to open and continue to June 19th, 2019 at 10:00 a.m. Second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share development agreement between the school board of Hillsborough County and RHICAS LLC. At 10:15, we have item F4, which is Commissioner Merman's item, that's to receive a presentation by the Blue Ribbon Committee for Child Safety, Hillsborough County Family Prevention Services Collaborative Plan. At 10:30, F2 is Commissioner Hagan's item, that's to receive an update on the Cultural Assets Commission. 10:45 is item F5, Commissioner Merman's item, requesting approval of $276,000 in grant match funding for the Early Learning Coalition of Hillsborough County. 11:00 a.m., item F3, Commissioner Hagan's item, asking to extend park fee waivers for those disabled veterans eligible for a free annual park entry passed to include a full waiver of any boat ramp fees. 11:15 is item B4, that's an agreement with University of South Florida Institute of Applied Engineering for a grant for the Institute of Applied Engineering for the principal purpose of providing funding up to 5.2 million approximately to the company to provide applied engineering solutions to state, county, and municipal governments and industry. At 11:30 is item E1, which is a presentation on the Uptown Innovation District. And the final time certain is 11:45, G1, that's to receive a report regarding the Sustainable Stormwater Program, and those are the changes to the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm all right with putting A27 back on consent. I got the questions answered, but I didn't have them in time.
Okay, good. So we'll leave A27 on the agenda under consent agenda. Thank you.
Seeing a further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
We're now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your concerns are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside 45-minute period in the morning immediately following change to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for the public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard first before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes allotted for each speaker. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Belcher, followed by Grace McComas.
Good morning. Elizabeth Belcher, Sefner, Florida. I'm talking about B3 and B8. It is past time developers pay for their zoning application. It is unreasonable to expect the citizen- It is unreasonable to expect the citizens to pay for the developers' fees so the developer can make more profit. The developer who enjoys the benefits of rezoning should incur the related expense. The developer may pass the cost on to their buyers, but really, how much will that be? $10 to $20 per house? Again, the person who reaps the benefit should incur the cost, especially since the ordinary citizens are the ones who will have to pay for the additional costs associated with the development, i.e. roads, water, sewer, et cetera. As for the proposals, the cost to the developer should be increased to 110%, not to just the 90% since developers have underpaid for years. And after this increase, the fees will not go up again for years. Additionally, the fees should be raised to the full amount in 60 to 90 days. If not, the developer will flood the county with ill-prepared rezoning plans to try to evade the increases, increasing fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace McComas, followed by Nancy Stevens.
My name is Grace McComas, I live at 805 Old Darby Street in Sefner, and for once, I'm not opposing something. I'm really thrilled to death that Pat Kemp and some of the other Commissioners have been on board about increasing these fees and especially the use of the county services for developers who practically do the entire application at this point. And they definitely need to have payment for their services, not just their, you know, salary coming from the taxpayers. Mobility fees is another thing I was hoping you all will start looking at, too. That's another fee that we've let people use when they don't even meet criteria to start with. And I think Mike Merrill alluded to that recently when we had a thing about buyback program. So, I thank you very much, I'm so glad you're doing this thing, and I hope you all do it soon, not incrementally. If the builders know what they're in for when they come, they'll make that decision, yes or no, from the start. So, it needs to start like now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp be recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. McComas for her comments, but also let you know that mobility fees is on a future agenda.
Nancy Stevens, followed by Bruce Norrinsfeld.
Hi, good morning, my name is Nancy Stevens. I also want to urge you all to vote yes on the B3 and B8. These are common sense measures to have fees reflect the true costs of development. It makes sense to have transparent, all the costs included in development, including what the taxpayers of Hillsborough County have to bear to provide infrastructure for the developments. And on the question of making the negative impact this might have on affordable housing, I also agree that we need affordable housing in the county. However, I contend that part of affordable housing is having infrastructure as well as the house. You need roads, you need transit, you need schools to make living in Hillsborough County affordable. So, again, the development, when someone's, when someone's contemplating building a development, it should include all the costs of the development, not just what the builder's building, but also the cost of what Hillsborough County has to provide, to provide all the services. And I urge you to vote yes to have this reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norrinsfeld, that's for D2, a public hearing. Don't worry about it now, I'll call you up when public hearing starts. My bad. Okay. That's the last person I have on the agenda for public comment. We now have a motion for consent agenda, motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve the consent agenda, seeing no further discussion, please record your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Commissioner Merrill.
Yes, Commissioners, we have some time before your public hearing, so we'll go to the regular agenda, beginning with B1, which is the Affordable Housing Services item. And Cheryl Howell is here for this item.
Good morning, Commissioners, Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Services Director. I'm here this morning to ask the Board to authorize Affordable Housing Services to provide the draft program agreement for the Annual Action Plan for Public Comment and Review. It's required a 30-day public comment period, and it'll begin from June 5th to July 17th. And to authorize Affordable Housing Services to schedule a public hearing on July 17th in order to receive additional public comments, close the public comment period, and adopt the Planning Year 2019-20 Annual Action Plan. There's no fiscal impact related to setting the public comment review dates and scheduling the public hearing.
That's motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for putting this together so that people can have an opportunity to review our housing plan, affordable housing plan. But in light of what's happened this year with the potential, hasn't happened yet, but the potential of our legislature sweeping the Sodowsky Housing Trust Fund, it's critically important that we recognize the yeoman's work that the county is doing to address the crisis that we have when it comes to affordable housing. The number of people that cannot afford a house or a home, whether they own or rent in Hillsborough County is staggering. The costs to the county and to the citizens and the taxpayers, the social cost, is evident in what we will see later in our family services report and how we address our children and our families. So, the opportunity to review the plan and the yeoman's work that the housing in the county area is doing to try and address affordable housing is admirable, and thank you for your work.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. And I just want to draw your attention to the ad that was already in the paper today advertising this hearing, so hopefully we'll approve that, what we're asked to approve because it's already being advertised. I do have a question or a comment, I guess, as we move forward. I noticed that in this plan, and I recognize that this plan is just for the HUD money, not our 10 million that we're putting in, but it's, where they are targeting in a few places, they're targeting the average median income of 80% and below. And I feel like we should do more to address the 50% AMI, 67% AMI. I wonder if, you know, given that the need is so great, if we should consider lowering that cap to make sure that we're addressing the 50% to 67% of AMI, which has the greatest need.
Comment.
Well, I mean, this will be, right, so this is opening up the public comment period and review, and I guess, sure, that can be just something that we can all consider as we move forward on this. Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
I'm a yes, but I need, I need a reboot.
Motion carries six to zero.
Merrill.
Item B2, Children's Services.
Morning.
Good morning. Joanne Rollins, Department Director for Children's Services. You saw me with the drop seats this morning, I apologize. I'm here this morning seeking approval for Subcontract Amendment Number Six. It's a renewal between Children's Services and the Florida Network of Youth Services and Family, Youth and Family Services. The renewal is for a five-year period in the amount of $6,563,710, which will extend from July 1, 2019, to July 30, 2024. This will result in an annual revenue amount of $1,312,312,742. The department is also seeking an approval for a budget realignment in the amount of $153,509 to be transferred from operating expenditures to personnel services, and this will align the actual award. Any questions?
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Merrill.
Item B3, Development Services.
Good morning, Commissioners, Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B3 is two resolutions for the Board's consideration to adopt an amendment and increase to the Development Services Fee Schedule. This fee schedule is one that is established for rezoning and permitting applications, not including building permit applications or separate fund. The fees are based on a study that was done by Fiscal Choice Consulting, which calculated time and cost for each application and translated that into an amended fee schedule that provides for both fee increases and decreases based on the cost to provide the services, as well as identification of several additional services that are provided that were not accounted for in the fee schedule. Pursuant to the Board's direction, we have two resolutions for the Board's consideration, both of which ultimately have the fees adopted at 90%. The first one would have the fees at 90% effective January 1, 2020, the end of this year. The second one would have a phased increase, with the first increase being this coming January, the second two, the following two Januaries. I'm available for any questions.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Oh, thank you, thank you for your report, and thank you for the analysis. It gave us a clear understanding of not only the high-quality work that your department does, but the demands that are put on the staff that I have discovered getting in this chair, the high-level professionalism that your office offers, our developing community and the housing community, as well as those that are interested in doing business in the affordable housing area. You know, in looking at this, I, as a business owner, and looking at the analysis, it showed that we have, we have a lot to pay for. Not only in the past, for the deficits we haven't covered, but more importantly, the importance of actually making sure we're covering and being responsible with the tax dollars that we use. I appreciate this resolution and the idea of funding 90%, but I'm not sure that offering a 10% discount is fiscally responsible to ours taxpayers. The comment was made earlier that it would be wise to consider doing good financial responsibility. And I'm also of the mindset that if you're going to make changes to something, help people actually recognize the pain right up front and get it over with. So, I'm a fan of ripping the Band-Aid off, because it hurts for a bit, but then you adjust, because that's what people do. And smart business owners are smart business owners. And frequently, our development community are very wise business owners. They've been able to benefit greatly from the growth of Hillsborough County. So, while we're considering this issue, I'd like to suggest that we really do consider doing a 100% and ripping the Band-Aid off and not phasing it in. Yeah, that's a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Kemp to amend, which one? Okay, we have, we have, we have two resolutions before us.
So, on B3, it's to amend the resolution to implement at 100% of the fiscal 18 permitting levels.
Okay, so you're talking about not the phase-in one, but the one that's affected, okay, all right.
And 100%.
100%, yes. Commissioner Overman has a motion, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of quick questions. I just want to make sure, if we get into another down cycle where development just stops, is there flexibility in this resolution that we could make adjustment on these fees to accommodate developers that are losing? I mean, we saw jobs, I mean, y'all had to have been here, it was excruciating, actually. And I just want to make sure that there's flexibility in this resolution, that we can adjust these fees if we get another downturn.
Commissioners, this Board will always have that authority. The adjustment to the fees would be accomplished by a resolution by the Board. In fact, we did have that occurrence
We did.
Just a few years ago, where there was a fee increase that had a phase-in period, the third phase-in was coming at a time where there was significant economic hardship. And so, that phase-in was adjusted, so that is, that is another, that opportunity is still with the Board.
Okay. And then, I don't have, I'm sure it's in my book, but as far as your report that you gave us last time on the fees and the costs and how it all squared up on the sheet, so the 100%, exactly what does that mean to you?
To me, that means that the, that the cost of service that was identified in the consultant's report
Right.
Would be the fee.
So, the fee would cover the whole cost of service?
Correct, 100% of the identified cost, which is based on the staff time and the cost of that staff time per application.
And then, why did the consultant recommend 80%?
I believe that he, he would say that there is nothing, you know, magical about his recommendation, but he looked at what would be
Oh, the industry standard, other counties, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, and he thought, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp be recognized.
Thank you. I've been very supportive of doing something in this regard. We have several issues, our fees coming forward as we go on. What I've seen is that we have been, we loved the late 80s, because that's when we settled our fees and never changed them since. And meanwhile, everything else has gone up, and what we've been doing is forcing the taxpayers and working families of this county to subsidize this development in a way that's grown to be really extreme. And even the highest level of the fees that are recommended in this and so many others are still lower than our surrounding counties. So, this fee, however, hasn't, these fees haven't been changed since 2009, only a decade, a lot of them have been three decades. But, we still need to move this up and start doing, taking responsibility, and we are, have not had the infrastructure in place that we've needed, we've not been paying the staff, we haven't been using our fees to cover the cost of doing this business, and it's time for us to also act like a business and start to make the fees cover the cost of doing the business in the first place. So, I'm happy to have this, many of the fees I notice on the schedule are being reduced also. So, it's not just one way or the other, it's been a real fine-tooth calculation of going over the fees. So, I appreciate the motion to have it at 100%. I think we moved there, and then, you know, we need to be reviewing these more frequently. I think, as I was told, that they're automatically reviewed every, how often?
We're recommending, the consultants recommend that we do a five-year review and updates consistent with the update timeframe that is in our mobility fee and allows some time for any process changes to manifest themselves in time changes.
So, that gives us some flexibility there, and as we stated, anytime that we ever want to reduce those fees, I'm not sure why we would do that. I think we need a more steady hand here in the way that we grow, and not be as fluctuating with the downturns and the upturns, because I think if we set the pace, that will set the pace also in terms of some of the good development we do. So, I'm happy to see this move forward, and as I, as a second, I'm supporting it, obviously.
Commissioner Smith, before I call on you, do you mind if I call on the county administrator? Commissioner Smith, before I call on you, do you mind if I call on the county administrator?
Go ahead.
Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Commissioner, I just want to take a moment, just so you have all the information, to remind you that when the consultant was here, the reason he recommended not levying a hundred percent is that the study is not a precise science, and that if there's no cushion, if someone is looking for a reason to challenge the fees and the actual fees were greater than were projected in the study, it would provide, I mean, I'll let Christine speak to it, provides a basis for a suit, because the benefits, the, the cost of the fee, or the, the level of the fee has to relate to the benefits that are received. And so there is a reason why the consultant did recommend less than a hundred percent. It's up to you, it's a policy issue, it's not a legal issue, but I just wanted to be sure you had that information. That's why we said ninety percent, just to have that cushion, but you can do a hundred percent. Just wanted you to have all the information.
Inspector, you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just would echo that, yes, you do have the discretion, the, the ninety percent was a cushion to pretty much ensure that no matter what, if there was a challenge, there should be sufficient leeway. But it, it really comes down to, if the consultant report was, was accurate, then that would be the basis for how we would justify these fees.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I'm very happy to see this moving forward. One of the first times I ever came as a citizen to speak to the Board was before anybody here was here, and it was to ask the county not to implement impact fee-free zones they were considering doing with no impact fees, even though it was at the beginning of the boom. It was clear to see the development was booming, and there was still this political pressure to have no impact fees in, in certain zones in the county, and I prevailed upon that county commission. And, and then in this last year, on the campaign trail, I campaigned heavily on the promise to work very closely with the rest of the commissioners here to, to make impact fees reflect the actual cost to our community and our taxpayers for the services like this one, as well as for the infrastructure. And as I said at my investiture, that was always, that one promise was always my biggest applause line. There is a lot of political will and desire among the constituents across this county, from, from living rooms in South Tampa to South County to Keystone. Everybody is tired of shoulder, subsidizing this one industry and, and is hoping that we will rectify that in this, in this term. And so I'm really happy to see us moving quickly to do so. I am also glad that the motion is not for the phase-in, but for ripping the Band-Aid off. I think we've given developers too long, let me put it this way, we've made our taxpayers subsidize these costs for too, far too long, and it's, it's only responsible business, as you said, to, to make the fees, these are user fees, to make these fees reflect the costs. I understand this point about, you know, not giving developers the, or, or anyone a, a hook to sue us, that just in case there is an occasion where, where the fee is a little bit more than the cost, I'll leave that to the maker of the motion to go back to and decide. I'm for, you know, either, either way this Board wants to go on that. I do have one last issue. During the May first Board meeting, where we talked about bringing this forward, the Board, and I'm, I'm reading from the recap, the Board directed staff to bring back a draft resolution to implement the Planning Commission and Development Services fees at the ninety percent amount, and to review the fees every three years. So that was, that was the motion, and I don't see the review every three years in this resolution. I, I guess it doesn't have to be part of the resolution, but, so my, I have a question. Is, is the Board direction to review every three years, is that already accomplished in our motion of May first, or does that need to be part of this resolution? Or do we need to determine that today?
I would think it's every three years, because it's part of the motion, which is part of the record.
Okay. So, to clarify, it's every three years.
And if you'd like us to, you know, we can incorporate that into the resolution and make it very clear.
Resolution is memorialized in the resolution.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that it's part, so if, if I need to
No motion is necessary. They know what to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Okay. I don't see any, I have any else in the canoe, so I'm going to wrap this up.
I got something.
Oh, you got something to say?
You want me to ask my questions before you wrap it up?
Oh, no. But what I did want to address, the comments that were made regarding the ninety percent, the hundred percent, and the cost of services. If I remember in the report, there was an indication of the cost of services at the current service level. And the comment we got back from the industry in some of the testimony and things that we've read in the paper indicated they weren't opposed to raising the fees as long as they got more services. So while I absolutely adore our, our professionals in our, in our department, if we're going to have an increased level of demand by the industry, then we have to have that wiggle room to be able to pay for. And if what we're raising the fees, if ninety percent covered what, as a, as a number, what we are currently offering, and our industry would like to see a higher level of services, going to a hundred percent allows us to responsibly do that, and not be behind the power car for three years when we go back and look at what we need to do. So I appreciate the concern, but I don't think having more resources to offer more services is necessarily a bad thing. So, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Gormly.
Yes.
When the consultant was looking at this whole concept, did he look at, or make any recommendations on a differential between large scale and small scale?
He didn't make that a differential. He, he, what he recognized is he looked at the time that were done for minor modifications versus major modifications versus rezoning, and, and found that the average time was, was not tremendously different. So he did distinguish between those, those applications. I think that, that some of the concerns that we've heard is the, the smaller businesses and the impact of the fees on smaller businesses, and the Board did direct, and we're going to bring back some suggested policies for how those can be handled by the Board along with affordable housing projects. I'll tell you, currently, there is a fee waiver provision that is in the, the Board adopted Development Review Procedures Manual. Currently, that fee waiver is oriented towards either nonprofits that are providing services for, on behalf of the county, or individual homeowners improving or doing work on their homestead that are, that are at the lower income level. That's something that we can look at to see how that might, might be expanded to address some of the smaller users of our, of our services.
So you're going to bring something back?
Yes, yes. We have direction from the Board to bring back some policies.
That will address the, the small?
Small businesses and affordable housing, yes.
All right. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that was my question, I think, when we discussed this last time, so I'm glad you brought that up, was I am worried about the small guy.
Yeah.
You know, and I have to also remember that they do provide a lot of jobs in our community. It just, you know, we have to remember that, and those people need to be paid and have a good housing and all that kind of stuff. But, so, so I guess I'm unclear about what your response to Commissioner Miller was, you're going to bring back here a change in this resolution, or the policy, or what?
Sorry, it was not, it was not clear. What the consultant calculated was the cost
Right.
For each application.
Right.
The differentiate, he didn't differentiate between whether the, the applicant was a, a small business person or a corporate entity.
Right.
He was simply looking at the time that went into each application. What I think, heard from the Board at the last discussion was there was some sensitivity to those users that while, while, while the fee may be a correct reflection of the time, the Board wanted to consider potential different, differential treatment for those that are smaller businesses and affordable housing.
Yeah, ten or fewer employees, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, if I could just, so I just want to repeat again what I said last time, which is that we, we want to take some time to look at this, because it's, it's nearly impossible for my staff to make judgments about whether someone is profitable or not profitable. Size is irrelevant. Small businesses can be extremely profitable without having a lot of assets and people. Once you open the door and begin making exceptions, everyone wants to rush through the door and get a lower fee. So I think what we're saying is, let's adopt the fee today, let's go into this a little more slowly and thoughtfully before we open the floodgates, because it may reverse what you're intending to do, because everyone will say, I'm different. Everyone will say, I'm not making a profit. My folks, I don't want to put my folks in the crosshairs of having to look through the balance sheets and income statements of small businesses to tell whether they're profitable. I think that's bad policy, I think it's bad practice. That's why we just want to get the fees in place, and then we can talk about the rest of it later. That's my recommendation.
Okay. Excellent points. And so you're going to, you're going to sit down, figure all this out, and come back to the Board with some kind of policy at some point? Okay. That's great. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Kemp, that will amend the resolution that presently reads, it will change its, whereas based on the results of analysis conducted by the Fiscal Choice Consulting, the proposed fee schedule is found to provide for the recovery of approximately one hundred percent of the costs associated with providing these services, and so forth, so forth. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, Commissioners, it's 10:00 a.m., and time for our public hearings, beginning with D one.
Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. This item is a, a proposed amendment to the impact fee ordinance that would have the effect of updating the current fire service impact fee ordinance to account for current cost levels. It would incorporate a rescue services component into the, into the fire impact fee to account for the fact that the fire rescue department already provides rescue services, as in EMS. It calls for an annual indexing of this impact fee to keep costs current each year, and it provides for a new fee study to be conducted every five years. The fee would be effective October first. Under state law, an impact fee increase cannot take place until ninety days after it is initially noticed. County staff, along with Chief Jones and the county's impact fee consultant are here if you have any questions. This is an advertised public hearing. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item D one? Anyone? Yes, sir. Please come forth and state your name.
Yes, my name's Herbert Belcher, Sefner, Florida. I'm here just to reiterate that we do need our fire services and our ambulance services. They're very extremely important. I suggest that we use the impact fees on that also, at the hundred percent level. Period. And again, instead of five years, make it three again. Keep it in conjunction. That way, it's all easy. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item D one? Close of public hearing. Commissioner Overman, you rec, well, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Given that we have actually considered our fee structure and to give some certainty to our developing community, as well as our citizens, it, it may be something to consider to doing the review of the fees that involve development and the supporting of the services to a three-year review, whereas this report recommends five. There may have been some possible confusion, because previously, the prior resolution suggested that maybe we went five instead of three. But I would, I'd like to suggest that we have a conversation about whether or not we do three or five year in the way of review.
Okay, is that an amendment? Because I have a motion by Commissioner White, and a second by Commissioner Kemp, you're going to amend the motion?
I would like to amend the motion to a three-year review versus five.
Is there a second? Well, you just seconded the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Again. Commissioner Smith, you seconded it? Okay, we have an amendment by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I, I would just like to say, you know, all these fees we've found have been reviewed at, you know, ten years or even twenty years, and then they're woefully inadequate, and there's a big gap, and that, then we have to consider, you know, raising them a huge amount. So if we do everything every three years, it, we can just raise it incrementally as, as needs be, or lower it as, if, if the economy dictates in any way, and just keep a closer eye on it. It'll be easier for everybody, and, and as you say, more uniform process for us to do all the fees at every three years as we go.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Yes, I believe that we do need our fees reviewed every three years. I think that would be prudent and wise, and really respect the state of our economy and, you know, look to make the fees appropriate. This particular fee, I said about the ones that haven't been done since the late eighties. This particular fee, I believe, was a, was a 1988 one. And it was, it, it is, if you see the chart that we had in our packets, and I think was presented prior at a workshop, we are incredibly below every other county on that chart, at the very, very, very left-hand corner, with the lowest fees, I mean, by ten and twenty times lower than other counties are charging, right on the southwest coast of Florida. So, very conservative counties in terms of some of their policies, but that's a responsible thing to do. We certainly all recognize the need for fire and rescue. We're, no, even though we're doing this fee now, we are already paying, as we know, dearly for the lack of infrastructure in the past that we've had for fire and rescue. And so this is really important that we move it up, and important that we do it, review these every three years, and, and not wait thirty years to be updating these fees.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. I have, let me just start for the record by saying that I have no issue with reviewing it every three years. I'm happy to support the motion on the floor. With, with that being said, though, in theory, and I stress, in theory, if, if an impact fee is indexed, you should really never have to review it again. So how, how does that, how do those two issues work together?
Sure. Commissioner White, the way that the indexing would work, it would be an administrative process. So what would happen is staff would use an index that's called, I should bring the consultant, but I think it's the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. That, the, that's going to increase from year to year, I want to say, in the discussions with the consultant, the average is around two and a half to three percent per year. When you plug that into the current study, it's going to, over each year, it's going to have a slight increase. Now, when you hit, say, a recession, construction costs can fall, so it actually could index the fee downward, which would be an accurate capture of what the impact in your development was, even if it's falling. The difference between the indexing, which would be an administrative process, and the fee, the study update, which was five years or three years, whichever the Board wishes to do, would be, the consultant would completely update the study, and then we would bring the study back to be incorporated into the ordinance, much like we're doing now at, at a public hearing. The distinction is each, the indexing is going to reflect certain cost changes each year through an administrative procedure, as opposed to going through the full update process, which would then come back to the Board. It's, either way, it's the Board's discretion, but like you say, the purpose of the index is to reflect cost changes. That, obviously, the 1988 ordinance wasn't the case.
Tom Fast, Assistant County Administrator. The other thing, Commissioner, I just wanted to point out, when we're indexing, we're indexing against this study as the baseline. The Board just approved the bond for additional fire stations, so once you add those additional fire stations, the three-year review will then take into consideration those additional fire stations. So it's not truly an apples-to-apples.
And there are probably any number of additional factors that, that could impact it, as we're studying it every three years. it as we're studying it every three years, right?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Smith, voting on the amendment. Please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
We're now back on the amended motion for item D1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Merrill.
Public hearing, D2.
Before you do that, I see a public defender, Ms. Julianne Holt, here. Is there something you want to say now? Are you waiting for a particular issue, or?
Good morning, I'm here for the 10:15 presentation, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Merrill.
D2, public hearing.
Good morning, Rosemary Perfit, Assistant County Attorney. This is an advertised public hearing to consider adopting the additional 1 percent tourist development tax to be used in accordance with the authorized uses set out in state statute. This will increase our tourist development tax from 5 to 6 percent, and passage of the proposed ordinance requires five affirmative votes pursuant to state statute. I'm here to answer any questions, and Ron Barton, I believe, is here as well.
This is a public hearing, I have two people that were signed up for to speak on D2. Bruce Nerzissenfeld.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Bruce Nerzissenfeld, and I rise today to urge you to vote in favor of increasing Hillsborough County's tourist development funding. As a board member of Visit Tampa Bay for several years now, I've had the privilege of watching this county build its reputation nationally and internationally as a place where visitors can experience an authentic piece of Florida. I've seen how diligently the team at Visit Tampa Bay works every day to recruit new visitors in the most effective and efficient ways possible. They have one of the smallest budgets in comparison to their size, not only in Florida, but nationwide. They take seriously the trust you place in them and manage every dollar of their budget with an eye towards stewardship and accountability. As they compete against other deep-pocketed destinations, they have become experts at leveraging a modest marketing budget into billions of dollars a year of economic impact from tourism. They have done that for many years with the help of Visit Florida, the state's tourism office. With the future of Visit Florida in question, now is the time to put our support as a community solidly behind our home destination marketing organization so they can keep growing our tourism numbers and the billions of dollars in economic impact those visitors generate every year. We will all benefit. That's why I'm asking you to vote in favor of expanding our tourist development funding today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Antonosio.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning on the subject of expanding the tourist development fund. I come before you on this issue wearing three hats. As the Regional Vice President of Operations for Tampa Bay-based McKibben Hospitality, I see every day the results of our work marketing this great destination to visitors of all types that may not have been staying in our hotel rooms without Visit Tampa Bay's marketing efforts. As a member of the Tourist Development Council, I hear the requests for support, from local event planners, planners, to operators of facilities, requests that we frequently must turn down because of a lack of funds. And as Chair of the Board of Visit Tampa Bay, I understand the stiff competition we face from other destinations across Florida and around the world. So I have a unique perspective on the decision you are making today, and I'm here to urge all of you to support this increase in our tourist development funding. This money, the extra percentage we'll generate, will return to us on many times over in the form of increased visitation and increased spending across the board, on food and drinks, on attraction tickets and shopping, and on hotel rooms, and on transportation. As that spending ripples out, our entire community will feel its positive influence. This is a unique opportunity to build upon our growing success as a community and as a travel destination. I urge you to vote yes on this measure today. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm gonna state something before we do that. Mr. Morrison, you recognize.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, good morning. My name is Bob Morrison, and I serve as, and I stand before you today as the Executive Director of the Hillsborough County Hotel and Motel Association. I'm here to, this morning, just to make four quick points for you. Number one, almost four decades ago, the hotels in Hillsborough County came together with the County Commission to signal that a tourist development tax made sense for our community. Secondly, those owners then said, we will take out of our profits a reinvestment back into this community, knowing that at the end of the day, they had an option, but the option was to enter into a public-private partnership with you. Thirdly, you're looking at perhaps the ideal public-private partnership because we're not asking you for a dime. We're coming to you, saying to you, we have a willingness and we are convinced, the discipline that your staff and the TDC has shown in locking in on revenue or return on investment has been exactly what we hoped some four decades ago. Finally, our membership collects about 92 percent of all hotel revenue in Hillsborough County. When we look at that number, what drives going forward is the singular question, are we being self-serving in this request to ask you to endorse raising the tourist tax? But when we look at visitor spending studies, the answer is clear. We are not being self-serving, and why? Those studies show that visitors spend out of each dollar about 30 to 35 cents on a hotel, which means the other 65 to 70 cents goes to retail, department stores, transportation, and a wide range of other commitments that benefit those who don't give a dime to this initiative. So today, I'm before you to ask you, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough County Hotel and Motel Association, to indeed embrace moving our tourist development tax one additional percent to 6 percent. Our only condition or request is that you consider that one-third of that additional penny be dedicated to destination marketing so we can continue to fuel the pump that allows us to bring folks to our destination and for our destination to benefit as a result. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me close the public hearing. Let me, let me pass the gavel to the Vice Chair, because I'm gonna make a motion. I serve on, on, on the Board of Visit Tampa Bay, and I've worked diligently with Visit Tampa Bay and others to bring conventions here. Everything that's been said by the speakers this morning, I couldn't have said it any better myself, but do understand that this is a one-shot opportunity, that if we don't get it this year, and the number's not reached next year, we miss it. And we're not, we're not putting this on the taxpayers of Hillsborough County, these are visitors that come to our hotels and stay in our hotels. Visit Tampa Bay does admirable work with the budget that they have. If you see the other budgets of some of those that we compete with, not only in the state of Florida, but across this country, you would wonder how we're able to bring the conventions and, and other events here to Hillsborough County and do the things that we do. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve item D2. Pass the gavel to the Vice Chair.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Miller to approve, seconded by Commissioners Overman and Merman. And we have Commissioner Overman has some remarks.
Thank you. I really, truly appreciate the comments were made today. It is always fascinating when an industry decides to raise revenue to help itself, but what's critically important to this area is, you know, the Tampa Bay region has really beefed up its opportunity to shine in such a way, and I am so proud of the community of which we live. With that, we've been able to attract not only just visitors that want to come see the wonderful environment that we have, but also attend the big conferences and the big events. And the fact that we are having an opportunity to entertain some of the biggest venues in the country to come to the Tampa Bay region is evident of not only what our industry does in providing a welcoming, wonderful place for people to come and stay, as well as to be entertained when they get here, but it also drives the desire for people to move here. As we hear, we've got approximately 1,700 people a month moving to Hillsborough County. That didn't happen because they came here and had a bad time. They came here because they found a wonderful place to live and work and hopefully be able to play, too. So I'm, I'm encouraging being able to do this and really heartily support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I just want to remind everybody at the last, when we had the first presentation on this, that I did make the motion that the use of the dollars for the six cent come back to the board before final approval by the TDC. So we did pass that, and I just wanted to remind everybody. But I do want to thank the TDC for your hard work. You guys are just, it's a great team, I want to tell you. It's always been a pleasure to work with you and under the leadership of Ron Barton. Ron, I know you're here, and, you know, they work a lot behind the scenes, but we're definitely making ourselves a premier attraction, and that's what's important, and these people will now get to enjoy it even more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioners Overman and Merman to approve the six cent, and we'll, we'll take our vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner White, vote a no.
Your final public hearing is D3, and just to remind the board, we're gonna open this public hearing, take comment, and continue it to June 19th.
Staff, Mr. Gormley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item D3 is a concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement for the Riverbend West Phase III public hearing. The applicant has requested that this item be opened and continued to the June 19th Board Meeting at 10:00 a.m. due to the unavailability of the applicant today and apparently some other confidential matters. It is a public hearing that, on the business side.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D3? Anyone wishing to address item D3? We'll continue this item to June 19th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. Okay, thank you. Ms. Merrill.
Commissioners, before we go to your 10:15 time cert, and I'd just like to dispose of three items on the regular agenda that'll be very quick. Healthcare Services, B5, Social Services, B6, and B7. So be concise, please. Gene? Yep.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gene Early, I'm the Director for Healthcare Services. This is a recommendation to modify the agreement with St. Joseph Hospital for the provision of home health care and infusion services for Hillsborough County healthcare plan clients. It extends the agreement for one year. It updates the access to records clauses per Florida statute, and it updates the definition of Department to Healthcare Services Department or its successors. It's an approved, non-competitive procurement in accordance with the procurement policy, and funding for this modification is included in the FY19 budget. It uses no general funds. It basically uses the Hillsborough County funds.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve item B5. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Audrey, there she is, B6 and B7.
Thank you so much for, for having us a little earlier this morning. Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. This morning, I have two items. B6 is to accept 1 points, I'm sorry, $1,646,692 in federal grant funds from the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the Community Services Block Grant Agreement for the period of April 1st, 2019, through March 31st, 2020. The grant is utilized to assist low-income residents working towards self-sufficiency through programs administered by the Social Services Department. This item also requests approval of a budget amendment to appropriate $658,944 within the Social Services Community Services Block Grant Budget to bring the budget in line with the actual grant agreement for fiscal year 19 Community Services Block Grant Agreement.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Overman, and second by Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Ms. Merrill.
B7.
Thank you. An item B7 asks the Board to accept the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program Agreement from the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, increasing the current agreement by $4,898,877 to assist approximately 11,899 units of service for the period of April 1, 2019, through March 31st, 2020. This item also requests approval of a budget amendment to allocate $4,871,714 within the Social Services Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program Agreement Grant Budget to bring the budget in line with the actual fiscal year 19 grant award.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B7. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
And if we could do B8, hopefully that will go quickly, considering the prior discussion, but that will take care of all of our other regular items.
Good morning, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. This agenda item is the companion to Mr. Gormley's item related to development services fees, and these are the fees for the Planning Commission for related reviews. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's your pleasure.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith to approve item B8. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
And just to be clear, there were two resolutions attached to that, the choice of phasing or not phasing.
A move approval to not, to go full spore with this at...
Okay. It's a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith to approve the 90 percent no-phase in the First, the First Amendment Resolution.
Yeah.
Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
So this is at 90 percent? Is that where you want to be?
That's what we just passed.
I know, but I just wanted, because you did 100 percent on the last one, I just wanted to be sure that you understood that this was at 90 percent.
Thank you for...
You can move to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider at 100 percent.
Is there a second to reconsider?
Second.
There's a motion to reconsider by the vote by which item B8 just passed. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We're now back on B8. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
You need to make a new motion.
I'm sorry.
Make a new motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make, I'll move to approve this at 100 percent. And, and do we have reviews in there every three years also?
We can.
We will.
We will.
Okay, thank you. I just want to be clear about this, and this is long overdue, 1987 to now, and I'm very pleased to see this done.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith, to approve at 100 percent reviewed every three months. Three, no, three years. Three years. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to our long-awaited item, 10:15 time cert, and F4, Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for everybody, running 15 minutes behind schedule is really good. Usually, it's worse. But anyway, I'm really pleased to present this today. I'm gonna open it up with some brief comments, and I'm gonna ask Ramin Kuzkani, who's our CIO, he's also Chief Administrator of our Children's Services, and Chris Card. They will come forward and make the basic presentation, but I just wanted to make a few comments to open it up. I actually organized a Blue Ribbon Committee for Child Safety about three years ago, and I think is because I got tired of seeing the headlines, abuse, neglect, deaths, and I wanted, I just felt like the county could be a leader in child welfare and prevention services through collaboration, partnerships with community stakeholders and service providers. And we're going to move the county from being a primary service provider to a leader and organizer of... organizer of child abuse prevention and family stability. It's funny, when we first started, our theme was shut the front door to kids entering the foster care system, but, and, but to catch them early and focus on prevention. So I want to thank the members of the Blue Ribbon Committee. We have about forty members. They've devoted three years to putting this plan together. They're the primary stakeholders in the community, and I'd like to ask them to stand up so we could recognize you, all of you. I know quite a few that couldn't come today because of conflicts in their schedules, but, and I would like to single out Carl Harness, my partner in crime for three years. Thank you, Carl, very much. You really devote a lot of time and effort to this, and I sincerely appreciate you. First thing we did is we hired a facilitator, took us through a collaborative lab-type process. We did vision, mission goals were established. After that was done, we hired a consultant, Keith Carr from Forefront. He could not be here begrudgingly, he could not be here. He wants to be here, but just had to be in Atlanta. But he put, did an independent assessment of all of county services, and he developed a design that would best position our county and maximize the use of our existing service structures. And from both processes, there were four common threads: people, process, technology, and evaluation. And that's really to develop this early warning system that focuses on prevention. I do want to thank Keith Carr very much from Forefront. He and Carl and I and Rameen were big partners in this from the beginning, and his appraisal of the assets really gave us the information we needed to develop the options and recommendations. He, just to let you all know, there's volumes that he created, papers, volumes. He surveyed, interviewed, geomapped, collected data, reviewed documents from all the providers. And we had many lively discussions, as you all know, in the Blue Ribbon Committee, and, but we did come to an agreement on what success would look like, and I will get to that in a moment, but I need to tell you what the snapshot of a child in Hillsborough County who's at risk of abuse or neglect and what our county really looked like. Hillsborough County has the highest rate of removals, remove children, bounce from home to home. The system needs more money, more attention, more accountability for any decision of removal. The highest removal age group is zero to one. Zero to one. Sixty percent of removals are babies. And over, and in two thousand and seventeen alone, almost five hundred babies were born substance exposed, already exposed because of addictive mothers. We have serious mental health, substance abuse issues in kids and families, Crisis Center data. We work really closely with Crisis Center on this. Out of thirty-nine kids at any one snapshot in time, sixty-three, no, nine of them had had sixty-three hospitalizations. A hundred and seven, ten youth had a hundred and seventy-nine school suspensions. I mean, this just gives you a snapshot of what really it's like, you know, by the time they get to this deep-end system. Teens thirteen to seventeen, fifty percent are aging, fifty percent of teens in foster care are aging out of our system. That is just not acceptable. Of thirty-seven kids that they review placement histories on, the number of moves experienced by these children, eighty moves, seventy-one moves, thirty moves, twenty-seven, I mean, you could go on and on and on. It really was a grim picture. So that's the snapshot. We have about four thousand children in our county at any one time out of three hundred thousand that are at risk of being removed or are already in foster care. They're subject, subjected to the opioid crisis. The rapid growth in our county is also contributing to the problem, and just the general dysfunction in families now with mental health and substance abuse is really... So we shift, it was time for us to shift focus, and I think that the best way I can say it, we want to provide more prevention and diversion services and prevent removals when possible. But I will say this, the sheriff bylaw is the ultimate remover. And that is, but what the new federal law does is it puts a behavioral health person with the child protective investigator when they go out on calls to help them with their decisions. So the beauty of our project is in lockstep with the new federal law and the funding. The difference is, the current system that we have now versus what the new project states is that we will make prevention diversion services available to all at-risk children, families in Hillsborough County, not just kids in our foster care system, and safety will be paramount, paramount. No child, nothing in our plan reduces safety. In fact, our new slogan is more eyes, more often. We are going to wrap around case management services. We're going to provide a support system that's really going to be phenomenal. It will put us in a leadership position in the county, and all of our stakeholders will be held to a higher level of accountability. And so what does success look like? It makes us, it, well, for our county, it makes us a strong commitment to our children. Our families will be stronger. Our resources will move us into a position of leader by putting our resources at the front end, not the back end when it's too late. So with that, I will ask Rameen to come forward, and they will present the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman, and thank you for your leadership over the years. Commissioners, Rameen Kuzikani, Information and Innovation Office. In just a few minutes, you will hear from Dr. Chris Card, who is the Chief Executive of Community-Based Care at Eckerd Connects. But before that, I feel perhaps it would be of value if I were to, just launch this up, share with you an overview of the State of Florida's child welfare system. State of Florida's child welfare system is privatized. It has been for quite a few years by statute. The State Department of Children and Families has a number of lead agencies that contract with the State of Florida to deliver child welfare services. These lead agencies are called community-based care organizations, and they are actually distributed and allocated per judicial circuit in the state. We have twenty judicial circuits, so therefore twenty or so CBCs operate in the state. Each one of the CBCs has, in turn, their own contracted case management agencies and providers. We, as a county, for many years now, have been a provider to that lead agency then that is contracted with the state. So in essence, we have been a subcontractor to a contractor to the state. And Lake Magdalene Group Home that's operated by the county is essentially under contract by Eckerd Connects, which is a lead agency to the state. As Commissioner Merman mentioned, there are a number of drivers for our attention here in this county, and the reason why Hillsborough County is even in this conversation is because of that subcontract and our involvement with child welfare over the years. The county has seen an influx or an increase in number of removals over the last few years, although that number is on the decline. Luckily, thank God, it seems to be leveling off, but we still lag in the state in exiting kids out. So, and by exiting, I want to put that term into context. So thanks to a graphic from the Florida Children, Florida Coalition for Children, this graphic is a number of years old, about three, four years old, but still depicts the process as it is today. The idea isn't to bring the kids in and have them age out, as Commissioner Merman mentioned. The idea is to, to hopefully prevent, prevent them from getting in, but if you do have to bring them into the care, then work as diligently as you possibly can to get them out. That path in gray is the unfortunate path that the children will travel. What we're not seeing in Hillsborough County fast enough is their exit out. Now, exit means permanency. Permanency doesn't necessarily mean reunification. Everyone works toward reunification, but there are times that the family just, just cannot be reunited. That's when we look for other permanent solutions, such as family, kinship, adoption. This is significant because of the federal law that has kicked in. Commissioner Merman mentioned that. It's called Family First Prevention Services Act, which essentially says you will put your resources upstream, and then, to the extent possible, you will work as quickly as you possibly can to get these kids out to family and kinship. I also want to bring your attention to the top left-hand corner where the statistics are shown from the hotline. There are, although this graphic, again, is a couple of years old, the numbers are still similar, there are over three hundred thousand calls a year that come to the state hotline. These are allegations of abuse and neglect. Only about eighteen percent are verified. What we're very interested in, and this is on the data sharing piece that we'll talk about in just a few minutes after Dr. Card finishes, is the percentage of unsubstantiated calls to the hotline. About thirty-five percent of these calls are unsubstantiated. What that means is that there is something there, but not enough to perhaps launch an investigation, not enough to verify. So there may or may not be an investigation in that case. We're very interested in that statistic because we feel that if we can get, and this I have to acknowledge and thank Secretary Papel for approving, and obviously we're going to go through a legal review, but approving our access to that, to that subsection of the data. And while I'm thanking the Secretary and the Department, Commissioner Merman, Commissioners, I need to recognize Walt Socks, who's actually joined us this morning. He is the Regional Director for DCF in this region, Regional Managing Director, I think as we call him. We're very happy to have Walton down here in this region. He's very good. So we're looking forward to having access to that, but it's important, as when we get into the data sharing piece, for me to share that with you. The law that's really the driver behind this transformation in this, in the state and frankly nationally, is called Family First Prevention Services Act. We haven't, we haven't added too many in the title, I apologize for that. It's Family First Prevention Services Act. In summary, what it tends to do, what it aims to do, is to put resources upstream. It defunds group homes because it believes, the law believes that group homes has not, has not been effective in getting to that exit that we talked about a minute ago. It will only fund evidence-based prevention services, only evidence-based, and those are the ones that Dr. Card will mention to you. It will allow for residential group homes to operate, but only if they are federally qualified treatment programs. And that is a stringent set of requirements that the feds have set up. We're still waiting to understand more about the rules around the law, but so far, they look pretty stringent. Overall, what they want to do is to use funding to help kids remain in their homes safely. We can't emphasize that word enough. Commissioner Merman mentioned that. Every algorithm, every data sharing, every analytic, every database, every time we talk about connecting the dots, it has that safety feature in mind. There are, it's about twenty million dollars that the feds are allocating for Kinship Navigator Program. This is nationally now. We're hoping with this pilot, we can prove some outcomes that will allow the Secretary to hopefully then, then extend this pilot out across the state and then seek some of those national dollars. With that, let me just ask Dr. Card to come up and take you through the operational plan, and then I'll come back and talk to you about the data sharing. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for this time, and thank you, Commissioner Merman, and the Blue Ribbon Commission for putting this plan together and working so hard over the years to come up. Hillsborough was a, in the forefront of the move to community-based care twenty years ago, and it will now be in the forefront of moving us forward with this new federal legislation and changes. And these are big, significant changes that are going to affect the entire state, and we're getting way ahead of this. So I want to thank the Commission and the county, Mr. Merrill and his team for working with us. And before I get into all of this, I'll just say that Rebecca Capusta and Heather Cazola are here, they're a part of my team, and they're actually going to be doing all the work. I'm just the pretty face to get up here and tell you all about it, but Christopher Card, okay? So the outcomes are most important. We want to start there. This is what we are targeting to achieve, which is to reduce the number of children removed from their home by five percent, increase reunifications within twelve months. It's the federal standard, by a rate of five percent, from thirty-five percent as it is today to about forty percent. Of all kids coming in are reunified within twelve months. Net decrease of seventy-five children in residential group care. Hillsborough County has the most children in residential group care today. This is about a third, this will reduce our numbers in residential group care by about thirty-three percent. Increase the number of youths placed with a relative, non-relative by ten percent. That's the first placement. What we found is that when the first placement is with a relative, non-relative, that stability goes to ninety percent stability of that child during their time with us. So it makes a big difference if we get them with a relative right off the bat. And then ninety-three percent of our families served through the diversion services and other programs that you see will not be re-engaged in any child abuse referral for six months. This is, again, the basis of the ninety, of the evidence-based practices that we'll talk about. Just so you know that if we achieve all of those goals, we'll save our current system over five million dollars in current costs. So the next, this is a list of some of the, we have five targeted areas and some programs that are underneath those targeted areas, and the first one is the Enhanced Assessment Team, and these are trained mental health, substance abuse, and domestic violence professionals working with child protection investigations to assist families in developing strategies and engaging services to prevent removal of children. So we're going to, as been mentioned, we'll go out with investigators with trained professionals to work with that family onsite to try to resolve the problem, set up emergency safety plans, and see if we can keep that family together, engage the community services that are available, and also have intensive work with them until that we're confident that that's a stable situation for that child. Second is the Relative Caregiver Support Intention Diversion, Intensive Diversion Services. These are both, so when the Family Prevention Services Act came out, they've started a list of evidence-based practices that they will accept, and there's only twelve programs on that list nationally right now. Two of them are Florida-based, and those are two that we're using. So two of the twelve that have been recognized already, or one was, one is a promising practice, but the other one, our Children's Home Network here has developed a Kinship Navigator Program that is recognized as an evidence-based practice and has been recognized by the Family First Prevention Services Act, and we are going to engage them with our services. The other one is Brevard Cares, and their CEO is here with us today, and they're a promising practice that's been recognized, and we expect them to be on the list shortly. But that's from, out of Brevard County, and it's a wraparound intensive diversion program is that one. The Kinship Navigator is working with relatives to help them manage and care for their kids while they're in care. Our third is Enhanced Foster Parent Support and Services to Duly Involved Youth. So as we know, we got to move out of residential group care services, we got to build up our, strengthen our foster parents, as well as our Relative Caregiver Program. So we're going to evaluate, investigate, and establish a professional foster parent program, and this is going to be a big deal for how we move forward with managing some of these kids that are very challenging. kids that are very challenging because of their behaviors and their involvement with the juvenile justice system. And so we're going to also develop a behavioral-based residential services program that we're working with a separate group on, defining some of the parameters around that. And then our fourth issue is the Substance Exposed Newborn Services. And this is something that Commissioner Merman mentioned in her comments about the number of kids coming into our care. 60% are zero to five, 23% are zero to one. And so we are working with the Healthy Families Group here, Jane Murphy and her team, with evidence-based practices on how to work through and protect those infants, but also trying to get upstream so that they don't come into our services. So they've got four strategies that they're going to implement, a plan of safe care, pregnancy medical home, hospital-based services. They'll be at every hospital that provides neonatal and birthing services in the county, and they're going to be, there's a substance exposed newborn clinic. So they're going to work prenatally, they're going to work during the hospital stay, and they're going to work afterwards with these families to try to make sure that they get the services they need to support that family, that child, without having to have them come into our services. And with that, the last, the fifth item is the data sharing platform that Rameen is the expert on, and this, again, is another unique situation that we're going to try to put together here in Hillsborough County. So in my, just in my wrapping up my comments here is just to, again, thank you all, and I can't emphasize enough how much this will move us in front of the line in the state of Florida and probably in the country in trying to address the issues that are being presented to us with this federal law change, but also it's going to improve the care for our kids. All of these things are going to make things better for our kids and families. So I thank you, I thank you for your concern and compassion. I know many of you have been involved in these services and one way or another are very familiar, and I know you're all strong child and family advocates for kids and families in this community, and just thank you for that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Rameen.
So as we migrate to a culture of prevention and diversion from downstream services, we are putting together a framework for data sharing. The idea here is not any different from any other public safety or homeland security activity where you start connecting the dots sooner. We know through data and through just, through experience that stress, for example, in the home might lead to certain behavior. Now, if we know that the family is under stress and is having challenges, then if we can get to them sooner and preemptively and proactively and provide wraparound services and intervene sooner, chances are, hopefully, that we can keep that family unit together. So our goal really is keeping at-risk children safely at home. The challenge here, though, is how do you define at-risk? So the federal government, through the FFPSA Act, initially, when the first rules came out, they suggested that they would follow up with the definition of at-risk. Well, since then, they have now said, in my view, my personal view, that they're pointing down to the states saying, "You define at-risk." The challenge with that is that communities might begin to define at-risk disparately and differently. So while we wait to see what the guidance is from Washington and from Tallahassee, quite honestly, we are following Secretary Papel's leadership on this. We are working to put at least the framework together through which we can begin to bring in addition data sets that are important in that connecting the dots. I must recognize and thank Clark Frank for allowing us access to eviction notices, for example. We know that a family who is served eviction notice is under stress. And if that family is also part of that 35% unsubstantiated data set that I mentioned earlier, and now all of a sudden they are in the crisis center data set, so they have self-identified themselves as needing help, those are three dots. So we can begin to maybe get a sense that that family might be under stress, that we can reach out and help out. That data, that intelligence is extremely important to our sheriff's office because they do the investigations. As they knock on that door, they will now have more insight, if you will, into the home, that there might be other things brewing other than the information that they already have. The idea here is to begin to know what you don't know, because, quite honestly, more often than not, we don't know what we don't know until we knock on that door. They have a ton of information in the sheriff's office already, but there are some significant additional intelligence and data that I think would be helpful. So on your screens, the data sets that are in this preliminary study are the 35% unsubstantiated calls to the hotline. These are calls, if you recall, that somebody made to the hotline, made an allegation, but the counselor, as they're called when they respond, when they pick up the phone, determined that perhaps there wasn't much there. So the idea here is that to begin to look at correlation of data to see if we can begin to identify opportunities where we can reach out to folks sooner. Healthy start, healthy families. Jane's been gracious to let us look at that. Obviously, there's a legal review, Christine, that Mary Helen has been kind enough to attend all the meetings. We will follow legal advice and your lead on that, to the extent that there is legalities around sharing any of the data sets. Serious Injury Database, thanks to the Children's Board, that's also something that we're going to be looking at. And of course, DJJ, SINs, FINs, in that box. SINs stands for Children in Need of Services, and FINs stands for Families in Need of Services. This is a DJJ program that Joanne also operates or runs out of the Lake Mac campus. There is significant value to that data as well. There's a revolving door between the two departments, and to the extent that we can identify things sooner will be helpful. All of this is in the pre-planning phase and will be built here soon. The idea is to then feed that information back up to Tallahassee, hence that arrow that goes up, back up to the hotline, because next time a call comes to the hotline, that counselor will now have intelligence about what might be happening in the local area. So we're hoping to provide that feedback loop back up to the state as well. Secretary Papel, again, is very supportive of this idea. He has appointed a chief innovation officer to work the state, and they've retained some contractual assistance. They have reached out to us, they're working closely with us on this. And again, we're thankful for that. So with that, let me pause, and we'll be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rameen and Dr. Card. I always call you Chris because I've known you for so long, but I do, and I want to thank all of you for being patient through this presentation, but it was three years of work, so I just felt like I wanted our committee to have, you know, their time. But I would like to make a motion to receive this presentation because I think it's important that we put a stamp of approval on it, and, you know, and that they all feel confident that we're behind them 100%. And I couldn't tell you, The Tampa Bay Times got it right, that we are stepping up, and we're making a huge commitment. So thank you all.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. Commissioner Merman and all of the team, I cannot thank you enough for this work. As someone who's unfortunately, unfortunately, very familiar with this program, but also working on the issues that we have within our community regarding human trafficking of children in our community, it's great to see that we're going to start connecting the dots in such a way that we see those families that are in economic stress, medical stress, mental stress, that find themselves in a situation where, in your report, you indicate that the primary reason they're in the system, or they've become aware that they're in the system, over 40% of it was the caretaker's inability to cope. When we have families that are homeless or on the verge of homelessness, your point about evictions, you know, when a family's under such stress that they don't feel competent or able to care for their children, it opens the door for very difficult choices and very difficult coping skills. Getting ahead of this and being able to not only build the safety net for our community is critically important. Part of our challenge has been for not only in our children's services and our family services, but also in those areas where they, where our children are involved with DJJ, with the juvenile justice system, or families are involved in, or adulting or growing out of the system and find themselves still at risk and end up in the unfortunate situation of being coerced to do something they would not otherwise do. This is a way of stemming that tide. We're number three in the nation for human trafficking. This is a great way of starting the process of identifying those families, adults, and children, that are at risk of being at the mercy of someone else helping them do something they would not otherwise do. I can't say enough about the family finding system. Being able to connect a child that's at risk with family that can actually provide the services to give that child loving environment is critically important, but also to support that family as they take on a new child. You know, if you didn't have a kid in your house, or you had already three kids in your house and you're deciding to take on another child, it's not an easy task. Our foster parents and our kinship families that help carry the load in making sure that a child stays whole and healthy and able to learn and find that stability, I think, is also key to the success of this program. And it's clear that the legislative on the federal level find that that's an opportunity to be successful. So I am so thrilled to see that we're going to be connecting community services to not only the families when they're identified as being at risk, but also those that carry the transition, whether they carry it permanently or temporarily as this family reunites itself or heals. So I'm very thankful to see this and very thankful for the work that you've done over the last three years. Well done.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Merman for bringing this forward and for the work that's been done in the community, Dr. Card, Rameen, for what's been done here. Many of you know I was a legal services attorney working with families, and also my aide, Laura Lawson, was also a legal services attorney working in the same area. So I'm well familiar with the suffering, pain, and need that is, accompanies all this. I also was very happy to hear that, you know, bringing in information such as evictions. I know I had several women in my office in the past who had not a dollar for groceries that week with several children. So it's such an important area, and I'll be watching to see as it moves forward if we can maybe start to heal or work and work with these families to have a better outcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, and I also want to thank Commissioner Merman for all your work and your dedication, but importantly, for your heart and your heartfelt compassion. It's quite obvious in your presentation today that you really bring a lot of feeling for this work, for the children, the babies, and the families that are in need and need our help. We do a lot of dry business here and economic stuff and pothole filling, but we also do some important social services work, and I'm really glad that you've stepped up and led this with your heartfelt emotion for this, you know, in addition to the administrative side of things. And also want to thank the Blue Ribbon Commission and the staff, Rameen, for really bringing us to the forefront ahead of the federal legislation coming, but, you know, I'm really proud to see our county figuring out new methods of preventive services and early intervention and ways to shorten the time that these children are in the program before, in any program before they exit to a permanent solution. So thank you very much.
Okay, let me thank you also, Dr. Card and Rameen, and the Blue Ribbon Commission for all your work. Commissioner Merman just didn't start doing this since she came on the county commission. She was doing, working on behalf of children and legislation. We were there together in Tallahassee. So job well done, job well done. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman, to receive the report, see the presentation on F4. Seeing further discussion, please, record your vote.
Motion carries time to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Next item is your 1030 time certant, F2, which is Commissioner Hagan's item.
Mr. Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we're running a little bit behind, so I'll make my remarks brief. I've been very proud of work that I've done through the years in the economic development arena, specifically with the creation of the Film Commission and also with the Cultural Assets Commission. The Film Commission, I can tell you, is exploding right now, and in the next meeting or two, I plan on providing an update with specifics on how the Film Commission is performing. But I'm equally proud of championing the creation of our Cultural Assets Commission. We have two new board members here, and so today I just wanted to provide a brief update on the Cultural Assets Commission, as well as what has occurred over the last year and a half. I started working on this program back in 2016. The objective is to strengthen and promote cultural assets by creating a Cultural Assets Commission tasked with supporting and growing events that improve our residents' quality of life, but also have an economic impact on our community. It's important to stress that this is not facility-driven, it's not established to provide capital improvements for facilities. We have two or three other programs that support our cultural facilities. This commission is to support special events such as film festivals, music festivals, art festivals. The goal essentially is to take these events to the next level. In addition to that, it's also to support smaller events that may be in their infancy, but to allow them to grow. The BOCC initially provided the funding, or approved the funding, back in 2017. In January of 18, we approved the Cultural Assets Program and objectives, as well as establishing that the executive director would be under the umbrella of the Arts Council. In March of 18, we approved, formally approved, the ordinance creating the Cultural Assets Commission. At our last BOCC meeting, we approved the members of the board. We have some excellent members and foundations, including the Lightning Foundation, Peppin Foundation, and the Bartolo Foundation. A new program administrator, Ashlyn Stone, has been hired to be the executive director of the program, and the first round of funding is set to kick off within the next couple months. I'm very excited about this commission and program. I think, like the Film Commission, I believe that the Cultural Assets Commission will be very successful and have an economic impact, a meaningful impact to our community. The only action that's required today is to approve the appointment of the commissioner to the Cultural Assets Commission. As the commissioner who championed the creation of it, I would like to initially serve on the board, and so the purpose of day, my motion is just to approve Commissioner Ken Hagan as the BOCC's appointee to the Cultural Assets Commission. Enough for motion.
You're going to make a motion to appoint yourself?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing further discussion on the issue, please record your vote.
Motion carries time to zero.
I will say, years ago, there was a commissioner that appointed himself to be chair. But I would never do that, but I thought this was a little different.
I'm just kidding, sir, just kidding. Mr. Merrill.
Commissioners, your 1045 time certant, F5, which is Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, and I am going to ask Gordon Gillette, who is the CEO for the Early Learning Coalition, come forward and explain this. And I do want to thank staff, especially Tom Fessler, I don't see him in here, but thank you. thank you for working on this. And it is a partnership with the Children's Board. So, thank you, Gordon.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. Good morning, Commissioners. Gordon Gillette, CEO of the Early Learning Coalition of Hillsborough County. Thank you for considering this increment to the existing funding that the county provides to the Early Learning Coalition. The stars have aligned to significant degree in that we have received more federal funding after 10 years of flat funding for our school readiness program, which serves to subsidize families that are less than 150% of the federal poverty level with subsidized childcare and quality childcare homes. And with the 10% increase that we've gotten in federal funding at the county level, at the state level, and county level, we're now, we have been able to clear the waitlist for the school readiness program. For years and years, there was a waitlist, as many as 7,000 families waiting for their kids to get into the school readiness subsidized childcare program. We've been able to keep our waitlist clear for about eight months now with the increased federal funding. The other part of the stars aligning is that the state has allocated more money this year through the appropriations bill for the state match of local funding for this school readiness program. They took the dollars from $15 million available for the 31 coalitions across the state to compete for, up to $30 million. The third thing that has been kind of the aligning of the stars is that there used to be a certain level that you had to raise before the first dollar could be matched. The state has now changed the rule that the very first dollars that are given by local counties and companies within counties can be matched. And so as a result of that, now with a clear waitlist, we are able to consider doing something that we haven't done in a significant way in the past. And that is to begin to serve families that are marginally above 150% of the federal poverty level. This population of families actually is even larger than the population of families that are below 150% of the federal poverty level. And it has broken our hearts in the past that we haven't been able to serve that family that's just marginally over the federal poverty level with school readiness. Casper's McDonald's Company is in this program and is funding it. The City of Tampa has committed to the program. And we're asking that the Board of County Commissioners, as I say, increase their already sustaining commitment to the ELC. The Children's Board is considering an equal amount, $276,000, in increment to their already very substantial $1.7 million that they give to the Early Learning Coalition for the school readiness program. And it's our commitment that we will work with all of these agencies, the Board of County Commissioners, Children's Board, Casper's, and the City of Tampa, and any other funders in partnership to make this program the best that it can be and serve these families that are marginally over 150% of the federal poverty level. Thank you.
Gordon, but there's a time crunch.
There is.
And that's why we're bringing it here today, so I want him to explain that.
Sure. We have to have commitment letters from all of our partners by the 14th of June. And so that's why we're bringing it.
And the money, this is just a commitment letter. It's not, the money's not expended at the 14th of June. When does, it starts at the federal?
So it'll start July 1 of this year. The other change that's been made is there used to be a board, a public board that allocated these dollars. The legislature changed the way it works so that the Office of Early Learning, which is a division of the Department of Education, allocates these funds. And honestly, we're in a little bit of a competition with other counties like Miami-Dade and Broward and Palm Beach, you know, for this match money. And I think it's a great opportunity.
So if we get our commitment letters in early, we have a much better chance.
Yep.
Honestly. So that's where we're at. So I want to thank you, Gordon, and I'll just make a motion to approve item F5. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman, and Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. You know, as it relates to the comments we were making earlier, when a family has the opportunity to have their child in childcare so that they can actually work, even if they may be working two jobs, if they have the opportunity to have a child in childcare that also is being prepared for school, that trickle-up effect will help address all the other crises we were talking about earlier. So this is a true investment in our children and our community, but also in our families. And I thank you for finding the opportunity to find the match, for finding businesses within our community that understand the value of starting our children early on the path of early learning, and how critically important it is to support those families for success so that they add to the overall economic opportunity, but also the health of our community. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Gillette, also Commissioner Merman, for bringing this forward. And I was just taken aback and wanted to take a moment to celebrate the fact that, you said there was a waiting list of 7,000 before, and it's gone. That is an amazing achievement and a real mark for the county. So this is a time for us to really recognize that that's a huge deal. So I'm really pleased to hear that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman, and Kemp to approve item F5. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Your 11:00 AM times certain F3, which is Commissioner Hagan's item.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tomorrow is the 75th anniversary of D-Day. Last week was Memorial Day. Next week is Flag Day, and 4th of July is coming up fast. So there's no better time of the year for us to pay tribute to the men and women who have placed themselves in harm's way so we may enjoy freedom and all that life has to offer. And while the official start of the summer has, still a couple of weeks off, the weather's clearly telling us that we're well into the dog days, if you will. Well, part of summer boating is a great source of family fun, and here in the Tampa Bay area, it's part of our lifestyle and economy. Recently, I received an email from a gentleman in Lutes who brought to my attention that the county offers some entry fee discounts to county parks for active military, honorably discharged veterans, residents who are 100% disabled, and first responders. However, we don't extend any discounts for boat ramp fees. So I asked my staff to do a little research and look at neighboring counties and quickly found out that several of them offer different type of ramp discounts. Hillsborough County, on the other hand, charges everyone a boat launch fee at all of our ramps. Pinellas, no ramp fees for any disabled veterans. Manatee, no launch fee at any public ramp. Polk, all ramps except for the two campgrounds are free. As we know, Florida is one of the top three states in America where veterans live, and Hillsborough County is the number one county in Florida as far as where veterans reside. Very proud of the support Hillsborough County gives and has given our military and veterans through the years. And I think this is just one additional action we can take to demonstrate our appreciation for their service. So my motion is that we move for Hillsborough County to take the same discounts we currently offer on our annual park entry passes for active military, honorably discharged veterans, 100% disabled veterans, and first responders, and apply them to boat ramp fees. And I'd like for us to do whatever we can to have them in place for 4th of July holiday. That's the motion.
That's a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Kemp. Being a veteran, Commissioner Hagan, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I don't have a boat, but appreciate that. Okay, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Merrill.
Thanks, both members.
Amazingly, we are back on schedule. Five minutes off. Item B4, which is your 11:15 times certain?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity. Also joined by some additional individuals, including Dr. Bishop with the University of South Florida. Also with us is former Commissioner Mark Sharp, active in the innovation area. So this item, as Mr. Merrill said, is related to B4 and your agenda. It's a grant agreement between Hillsborough County and the University of South Florida Institute of Applied Engineering. The agreement addresses the terms of the grant, which allow for an up-to funding amount of $5,286,382 over a three-year term. Disbursement amounts are over, as I mentioned, a three-year term. Year one would be $1,214,200. Year two disbursement would be $1,909,18. And year three dispersments of this grant would be $2,163,164. It's the intent to disburse these funds over the course of each of those years on a regular basis, more than likely a quarterly disbursement, and predicated on dedicated performance reports from the institute to the county. The agreement also allows for potential reductions in our grant amount. And that maximum reduction in the grant amount could be as much as $2,355,286. So just short of potentially 50% of the grant amount. The potential amounts of grant reductions that could be received would be based on designated performance outcomes that are in the agreement, and they're measured by fundamentally contract awards and also what we've defined as institute revenues. The point being, it could be both contract awards, say with the federal government, but it also could be infusion of capital from private industry partners. So we've defined it as institute revenue, so it captures both contract grants and infusion of capital. And those will be the performance measures that could possibly reduce our grant amount. Further safeguards in the agreement include the provision that any assets that are valued over $1,000 that are acquired using county grant funds will be owned initially by the county. In other words, we'll tag those assets as county-owned assets. There's a precedent with agreements that we've done with USF in the past in which the equipment and those assets are actually county-owned until the term of the agreement's expired. And what that does is it gives us an added additional element of protection because we'll control probably the single biggest asset value in the institute initially, which would be equipment. And in the event of termination or default, that equipment's the county's to dispose of at our sole discretion. It also allows, though, for, at the end of the term of the three years, under successful performance, the county, through the county administrator, can dispose of those assets as they wish. The intent clearly is to convey those to the institute after performance under the agreement. The agenda also calls for budgeted allocation in the current year from the Economic Development Fund of $1,214,200 to address the first-year payment. And then in the two-year FY20, FY21 county budget, the remaining two dispersments will be budgeted in the Economic Development Department budget. I'm here to answer any questions about the agreement. Also, Dr. Bishop's here, if you have any further questions about the institute itself.
First and foremost, thank you, sir. And before we call Dr. Bishop, I want to make a motion to approve item B4 and pass the gavel to the vice chair.
We have a motion to approve item B4 by Commissioner Miller.
Let Dr. Bishop say it.
Okay. And a second by Commissioner Overman. And do we have Dr. Miller?
No, I'm Dr. Bishop.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what did you say? I'm sorry.
Dr. Bishop.
Bishop, I'm sorry. Dr. Bishop?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Did you have comments in regards to this?
No, I mean, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. The Institute of Applied Engineering is, I think, going to be a great benefit to the community and to the university. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And I don't?
Robert H. Bishop, University of South Florida, Dean of Engineering.
I know we've heard an extensive presentation on this in the past. I see Commissioner Overman.
I'll keep it brief. I am very excited to see a major stimulus effort for not only to celebrate those that are inventive and inquisitive and looking to serve not only our country but our community, but to also see the opportunity for high-paying jobs that this will bring. And in an area that seriously does have an opportunity for improvement, the partnership that you have with our local CDC in the area, the UADC, is inspiring. The project in terms of the development of the innovation project and everything that's going on in that area is nice to see not only this effort and our ability to help it, but also to see the opportunity that's brought to the citizens of Hillsborough County in the way of additional industry. As I mentioned earlier, we have a very large service industry economy, and this will bring some change to that that will help all the citizens of Hillsborough County. So thank you for the work you're doing and what you're bringing to the table.
Thank you.
You and the whole team, by the way. There's a whole lot of folks involved in this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, before we take the vote, let me say, Dean Bishop, you stepped out there on a wing and a prayer. And you met with Mr. Merrill, and I've talked with you, and you've talked to all those that were going to get a briefing produced next on uptown innovation. But this is something that's going to revitalize not only the university, but the entire area around the university that we've been dreaming of, and especially me, since I've been involved out that area since 19... And it's just outstanding work. And I'm actually asking all the commissioners to please support this item, and let's get busy and do what we need to do.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, a second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further comments, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your next item, 1130 times certain, is E1, and it's a related item, as Chairman Miller indicated, related to the Innovation District area. The Institute of Applied Engineering is the catalyst that we've been waiting for for a number of years to activate this district. And so what we want to do today is just for more informational purposes, just kind of lay a foundation of knowledge about what steps would be next, both for the district as well as for the Mozy property, which the county owns, which is another catalyst project to activate technology, livable, walkable communities, tie-together transit. I did speak with Mayor Castor because I wanted her to be up to speed on this so that if she was asked by the press immediately following this, she could speak with some authority. And she, of course, didn't make a commitment, but was very enthusiastic. And a lot of steps ahead of us, but this is kind of the first step. So let me ask, I guess it would be, who's starting off for us here? Eric Lambert? I'm sorry. Eric Liff from Lambert Associates.
Before we get started, hold up, Mr. Lambert. I see Tampa City Council Chairman Louis Viera here. Are you wanting to say anything, sir?
Should we decide? No.
Mr. Lambert, Mr. Lambert, let the chair of the city council come forth. He wants to say a few words.
We're just going to have him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to come here to talk to my friends on county commission in the county just to show my strong support for having a CRA for the University of South Florida area in Fowler Avenue. Like the chair, I'm a USF alum. I graduated in 2000. I grew up in the area. I grew up in Temple Terrace, so I've seen the great changes that we've seen throughout the Bush and Fowler area. And when I say great changes, they really have been great. The area, I think, has certainly been left behind in many, many ways. I remember being a young person, probably four or five years old, the first time I went out to USF. It was for the Special Olympics, to see my oldest brother Juan compete in the Special Olympics back when they used to be held at USF. And it was a very, very special place, and it still is. But what we need is, is for the county and the city to come together, to give that special place to emphasis and the love and the care that it really, really deserves. And I can tell you, as a member of Tampa City Council, it really, really pleases me to see the city begin to really focus on our neighborhoods, all of our neighborhoods, and that includes USF. This is an area, like I always tell people, This is an area, like I always tell people, that just with modest investments, you will see robust gains. Robust gains not only in the infrastructure, not only in the jobs, but most importantly, in the people that live out there. So I just wanted to thank you, and I wanted to also thank my good friend, Mr. Mark Sharp, for all of his dedicated work on this issue. So thank you very much for your work. And if y'all will pardon me, I have to run to a Warrior Games committee meeting. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lambert, you recognize her?
There's also two other individuals, just to recognize. Chris Bowen, who represents RD Development, the mall developer, who is actually providing the space for the Institute of Applied Engineering, as well as Sarah Combs, who is sitting, there she is, the executive director of the university area CDC. Eric, it's all yours.
Thank you. Again, my name's Eric Liff with Lambert Advisory. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, Commission. I'll start by just kind of a quick background. Our firm was engaged to assist in this strategic planning process as part of the economic and market and real estate strategic analysis. I'll kind of back up and say, you know, over the last couple of months, we spent a considerable amount of time putting together a lot of research analysis and documenting our findings within a pretty comprehensive report. I'm going to go through as quickly as I can kind of the key assumptions and findings herein and then be available for any questions if you need. I want to start by saying the primary goal of our effort is really to understand the underlying economic and market conditions that kind of guide the strategic process. In a sense, or, you know, just finally put, it's linking physical planning with economic reality. And that's the one thing that the staff has been very aware of, and I kind of at least appreciate our effort here. As part of the process, we look at historical, current, and prospective economic and real estate conditions. And the goal here is to create estimates of demand by use, including residential, retail, office, hotel, and industrial. And so the next step would have been to look at some redevelopment opportunities, kind of nodes within the area. And I'm going to define real quickly. The area for us that we study was really along Fowler, Mosey, anchoring the east side, uptown to the west. And there'll be an illustration here. And so to look at redevelopment nodes was the next step. And then come up with some kind of preliminary estimates of programs based upon some TIF revenue to help, and you'll see to help kind of spur the further, you know, additional processes as part of this process. As noted, the Uptown Innovation District, we look at it from a very traditional market perspective. It's a trade area within 10 minutes of kind of our core area. It's the area from which you estimate demand for residential, retail, and office jobs and so forth. In overview of, it starts kind of at 30,000 feet, and you understand what the demographics are. And in this case, you know, we know a lot about the area. And there's a couple of points here that, you know, we know the population, the growth of population, but there's a couple areas of challenge here. And you'll see that, you know, this area, from a household income perspective, is quite modest compared to the city and the county. Obviously, this presents some challenges in terms of retail expenditure and so forth. But we've also realized, though, that there are opportunities. And if you see on the third line down, the 16.9%, that shows you actually the number of people, the percent of people that are employed in this area that actually live in the area. And we look at that and say, that's a tremendous opportunity for recapture, for housing, and opportunity. And so we want to kind of, we kind of focus on that in terms of the residential development. There really is no hard and fast number, but we've seen in areas of this magnitude, it's probably closer to 20%. In terms of estimates of man, we run models. And the models are based upon input and output, population projections, employment projections from the state along all industry sectors. And so we run an inflow and an inflow and output model that determines the amount of demand. In this case, we're looking at a 10-year period. We're very comfortable, that's a foreseeable timeframe in which we can see and kind of more accurately forecast. Obviously, we'll then take this out longer for the projections of TIF, but we really want to understand what the opportunity is today. And so in this regard, we look at 10 years, and we say, there's an opportunity for, on the moderate side, about 1,800 multifamily, market-rate multifamily housing units. And we also look at, you know, as part of the process, obviously, there's the affordable housing component. But this, for right now, we're really trying to understand what the market-rate housing opportunity is. And in this case, we're looking at 800 to 2,200 units over a 10-year period. For offices, about 750,000 to 750,000 square feet to a million square feet. Retail is in between 600 and 750,000 square feet. Industrial, 700 and 900, and about 500 to 700 hotel rooms. Again, this looks at the market in conditions that are currently existing. Obviously, the opportunity becomes that much greater if there's investment in the area, incentive in the area, participation among, you know, major institutions in the area beyond what's going on today. And we're comfortable to say that these demand estimates can be expanded and enhanced if, in fact, you know, a lot of the planning and strategic planning efforts are implemented and kind of create this additional support. So the last part of this is, once we now know the demand total, demand over that 10-year period, again, for this purpose, we extended it over 20 years. We look at what we call, it's running a TIF model, understanding what the incremental revenue is from ad valorem taxes, if we ran the demand, if all this demand was captured within this given period of time. There's two key components for that. There's the existing properties, and so you have the base year, as you know, for a CRA. And then we do that calculation. And within 15 years, the base, just if you grew out the base properties, you've got about $539,000 in increment ad valorem tax per year, cumulative about 5.7 during that 15-year period. For the new development program, we're assuming, if you saw, the demand estimates that we projected was for the trade area. If we're assuming that we're going to capture a portion of that, because our study area, don't forget, is in a smaller, a smaller area within that study area, we're looking at about, and again, the development program saying that we can capture up to 1,600 units, 750,000 square feet of office, a half a million square feet of retail and so forth. If you look at the new development TIF, you're looking at about $350,000 annual increment, cumulative being about $4 million over that 15-year period. So in total, between the new, you know, the existing properties and the new development, there's about $900,000 in annual increment and close to $10 million in total cumulative. What does that mean? If you look at it, those are definitely, it's sizable numbers. However, in the context of a larger planning perspective and kind of the, you know, the strategy employed, where you have capital improvements, there might be needs for incentivizing or subsidizing some development at some point in time. There, you know, we want to expand this base. So to help us maybe look at broadening the area or kind of realigning the boundaries, and which is going to be talked about in a little bit. So to have this set as the basis, you know, for this part of the discussion, I'm open for any questions if you'd like, or we can continue with the presentation.
Any questions at the end?
At the end.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric. So next, now that we know kind of what the market looks like for the creation of a CRA or a TIF, we have our bond counsel and our financial advisor just kind of talk about the basics of how a CRA is formed so that everyone has a common knowledge. So the reason why a CRA and a TIF is important is that oftentimes, and this is a classic case, areas that have huge potential, if they don't grow organically and they don't develop organically, tends to mean they need some sort of a way to ignite that. And typically, what happens is local governments create TIFs and CRAs to provide for basic infrastructure and redevelopment that then attracts investment, attracts business. We have the key ingredient here of the University of South Florida. We've seen the Institute of Applied Engineering as an example. That has not been exploited very well. It's a huge asset. They are in the top 10 in the country in terms of intellectual property and patents, but they're at the bottom of the list in terms of commercializing those.
That's an article in the paper that they're one of the tops in the world.
In the world. So how do we activate all of that intellectual property and turn it into commercialized products and services and, for us, jobs in an area where we want to create dense growth? Where we want to provide all the things that we need to spark transit and transitory development? That's the kind of area where you want to focus it. So we're kind of at the tipping point now where it hasn't happened organically. The potential is there. A lot of good work has been done by Mark Sharp and his group. And now the decision is, do we take the next step to help incentivize the area? And to do that, as I said, the classic tool is a TIF or a CRA. So with that, I will ask, I guess, who's starting? Yes. Bond counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning. I'm Chris Rowe. I'm with the law firm Bryant-Miller-Oliver, which serves as bond counsel to the county. There are two contexts in which tax increment financing has historically been used in the state of Florida, the first of which is community redevelopment. In a community redevelopment program, city or county identifies a given area as one that possesses blighted conditions appropriate for redevelopment. Once that area has been identified, the county would designate an agency, a redevelopment agency, a separate local government entity to administer redevelopment efforts in the area. A plan is adopted, a formal written plan for redevelopment of the area that guides how it will unfold over the lifespan of the agency. And the redevelopment is paid for substantially by the tax increment generated within the area. And as Eric described, the increment is basically the difference in the ad valorem tax revenue generated each year in the area as it is remediated and property values increase. Each taxing authority with jurisdiction in the area is required to contribute tax increment annually. This is primarily the city and the county. There are certain exemptions under the statute. Local governments that don't have to contribute the tax increment. Primarily, the school district. The school district is exempt from having to contribute tax increment. And those monies that are generated each year are used by the agency to effectuate remediation of the blighted conditions according to the redevelopment plan. So the general steps to establish a redevelopment agency involve first conducting a study to determine that the statutory conditions of blight are in fact present in the area. Those conditions involve identifying whether or not the area has a substantial number of deteriorated structures in which conditions endanger life or property or lead to economic distress. And at least two of 13 enumerated factors or criteria defined in the statute are present. These include defective road, parking facilities, failure to show appreciable gains in property valuation over time. Once that study is conducted, the county in this case would adopt a finding of necessity. This is done by resolution, and the resolution designates the area, actually contains a legal description of what the area is, and deems it appropriate for exercise of redevelopment powers in that area. The agency is created. The agency would consist either of the county commission, sitting ex officio as the Board of Supervisors, Board of Directors of the agency, or the county could designate an appointed board consisting of five to nine members. At that point, a redevelopment plan is adopted. The redevelopment plan is typically being developed simultaneously with the other steps that are unfolding, but it's formally adopted once the agency is created. And that plan sets forth the objectives and the goals for the redevelopment in the area and identifies specific projects. Finally, after adoption of the redevelopment plan, a trust fund is established. This is done by ordinance. It's basically the repository for the tax increment that is paid by each of the taxing authorities each year and withdrawn from by the redevelopment agency in order to effectuate the redevelopment efforts. So a number of considerations to bear in mind with community redevelopment projects. One, it's a creature of statute. Redevelopment is governed by Chapter 163, Part 3. It's not a home rule exercise. All the powers that drive for community redevelopment are found in that chapter. Each taxing authority is compelled to deposit tax increment into the trust fund each year, with the notable exception of school district and various other smaller, special districts. The process to establish a redevelopment program is fairly long because you have the finding of necessity, the study, the development of the plan, et cetera. It can take between six and 18 months generally, maybe a little faster, a little longer, depending on specifics. The tax increment can be pledged to repayment of a bond. So some communities issue a bond at the outset to gather the money that's necessary to effectuate wide-scale remediation and repay that bond over time through the tax increment proceeds paid annually. One thing to bear in mind, of course, is that the increment generated each year is entirely dependent on the value of property in the area, and that value of property can fluctuate over time according to factors and forces beyond local control. For instance, in the event of a recession, wide-scale property value decline, you'd see a decline in the tax increment generated each year. Also, as of the past three or four years anyway, there have been efforts at the legislature to somewhat restrict redevelopment powers. Those efforts have not proved successful until this past year, when House Bill 9 was passed. House Bill 19 in its final form contained a number of, indeed, limitations on the redevelopment powers, but primarily limited to additional reporting and ethics training requirements for board members of redevelopment agencies. Another important point to note is if a county creates a redevelopment area and any portion of that area is located within municipal limits, within city limits, the city basically has to consent to that. And typically, as a condition of its consent, the city may wish to have one or two board member appointments to the governing board of the redevelopment agency. The other context in which tax increment financing has been utilized in Florida is home rule. And this involves not a statutory grant of authority, but it's premised on the county's home rule authority. It does not require an initial finding of blight. It's a streamlined implementation process as compared to CRAs or redevelopment because you don't have to go through the initial study. You don't have to find the areas blighted. You don't have to develop a formal written plan, et cetera. It's basically a designation of an area within the county within which the county will fund redevelopment projects or projects unrelated to redevelopment or addressing blight. In a system involving home rule tax increment, the county would not be able to compel tax increment contribution from other taxing authorities. However, those other taxing authorities could contribute tax increment voluntarily, basically through an interlocal agreement between the county and those other entities. And here, too, the proceeds of the annual increment can be bonded for infrastructure projects. In this context, there is not a separate redevelopment agency administering expenditure of the increment over time. Rather, the increment expenditure is administered either directly by the county or through a separate entity that's created for purposes of administering the funds. That can either be a dependent special district created by ordinance or an administrative entity created by interlocal agreement between the county and the other involved taxing authorities. And that's the end of my presentation. Glad to take any questions or wait till the end.
Okay. Any other presentations, do you want?
Wendell, do you have anything?
I can add 30 seconds.
Yes, sure.
Wendell Gertner, Public Resource Advisory Group. Wendell Gertner, Public Resource Advisory Group. If I can go back one page to the key considerations on here, right in the middle. The tax increment can be bonded through a bond issue or a bank loan. The next point down, that the incremental revenues, because they're based on property values, are very volatile. They're based on the very top end of the property value because you're creating that increment. So a downturn that might have a 10% decrease in overall tax could have a much larger decrease in the increment. In early years, many governments provide some sort of additional security to share that risk to investors to make the bond saleable, but still use that tax increment. But it is something that is pretty volatile in terms of financing and typically have to look at a larger credit package as part of it.
Thank you. If we decide to go forward, we would recommend not using the home rule method but the classic method so that we could compel other taxing authorities. More importantly, we really need the city as a partner because obviously their property is just south of Fowler. Ours is north of Fowler. And so that would be extremely important to have them involved. One other quick item, TIFs take time to throw off revenue because it's based on development. And so there are no cash flows of any appreciable amount during that period. So the powerful tool that we do have in the interim, because a lot of the infrastructure that's needed is transit or roads, would come from the sales surtax to begin to do all of that work while the TIF is building, while the TIF revenues are coming in. The final presentation, which will be from our consultant on our Mosey property, and we have representatives from JLL here. So I just want to reinforce, this is just a conceptual idea of what we could do with the property. So don't take literally what you see on the page. It's really to have a discussion about what we do with the property. It's a very valuable piece of land as part of this Innovation District, so.
Thanks. My name's Brian Smith. I work with Jones Lang LaSalle's Public Institutions Advisory Group. And we've been working with the county now for a couple of years under Mr. Merrill's direction here to take a look at what could possibly become of the old Mosey site and how we could utilize that going forward. So the first thing we really did when we started to study the site was look at the area, what the area is home to, how we could leverage the institutions in the area to bring private businesses, to help USF potentially commercialize some of those patents that were discussed earlier. And so the area really presents some unique institutional synergy. The VA Hospital, Florida Hospital, University Mall, Yingling, Moffitt Cancer Center, all have invested significant dollars or have plans to invest significant dollars in the area. And we believe that that could certainly present an opportunity for the private sector to capitalize on that investment. Secondly, the location and size of the Mosey site is quite... Secondly, the location and size of the Mozy site is quite unique. There are not, simply put, that many land sites of this size available in this area or really the Tampa region as a whole. Additionally, the access that you have to the interstates on either side, to the east and the west, is unique and then presents a really great opportunity to get people in on a regional level and grow the area. From more of a micro standpoint, we looked at the uniqueness of the Mozy structure. The main Mozy facility, and when I say the main Mozy facility, I'm talking about the building in between the east and west, buildings that were built at an earlier and later date respectively, has a lot of architectural significance. Antoine Prodock designed the IMAX Theater and the Mozy facility. And it's highly unique and highly significant from a structural standpoint. As I'm sure many of you know, there is a lot of concrete in that building and it would take quite a bit to get it down and construct something else on its size. So we looked at it as an opportunity to leverage some of those unique architectural aspects and potentially create something unique that could be accretive to the area, the institutional anchors, residents, students, et cetera. And then the last thing we looked at were some national examples that show that this concept could potentially be successful. And the one that I really want to highlight is Cortex Innovation Community in St. Louis. I'm lucky enough to have a sister who just graduated from St. Louis University, so I know the area fairly well. And it's uniquely situated in between St. Louis University and Washington University to the west, along with some major medical anchors. But it was essentially a blighted area, very similar to this area, maybe even to a greater extent, that the city invested in, decided to run light rail right through the middle of, and created this sort of unique, adaptively reused, but also dense and modern and new area that a lot of technology companies, biotech companies, companies that work directly with university or medical ecosystems have decided to locate at. All of this revolving around the objective of offering an economic catalyst for this area that provides quality job opportunities, that starts to change the dynamic of the area, move it away from the transient nature that it's currently known for, and make it more of a quality area that provides increased amenities for residents, increased amenities for students and employees. The next slide I'll go to, and I want to highlight to Mr. Merrill's point, this is extremely conceptual. Our goal here was to work with a local architecture firm to explore what could be possible on the Mozy site. This is a simple massing study that shows that there's the possibility of putting over a million square feet of space on this 74 acre piece of land. It's a substantial piece of land, substantial opportunity to develop new assets that historically haven't been located in this area, and again, leverage the unique synergies, the unique location that we have, that we have the opportunity to access here. And this is just, this gives a few examples of what these areas look like. The Cortex building you see here, that was an adaptive reuse property, that brick building there. Durham ID is another unique project in Durham, right off of the Durham Belt Line. Schuylkill Yards is a little bit more urban, but sits right next to 38th Street's Amtrak Station in Philadelphia. And then obviously, we have Wake Innovation Quarter. But the one thing I do want to highlight with all these is, number one is density and number two is transit access. The companies that typically look to locate in these locations prioritize those things very highly. They want to attract millennial workers, people that don't necessarily want to take a car to work every day, would prefer to walk or take a train if they have the opportunity. So that transit access has been critical to the success of all of these projects. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation. For your future reference, as you have questions, because this is an urban design, planning and infrastructure project, Deputy County Minister Lucia Garces will be the one leading it. So if you have questions, she can pull together what you need. But with that, we'll open up the questions, comments.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
My question's not so much about the CRA or the TIF, probably not too much about the Mozy site either. It's really about the whole Innovation District. There's a piece, though, that might touch on the Mozy site. I guess my first question would be, where are we in terms of comprehensive plan work? We're gonna, we're gonna need some amendments to the comp plan to make some of this happen. Is that right?
Yes, we would, yes.
Okay.
And that hasn't started because we wanted to get direction from the board to start that effort, so.
So that's actually a beautiful segue into what I want to talk to you about. As we look at better planning across unincorporated Hillsborough County, and when we look in terms of areas, you know, say in the far eastern stretches of the county where we do not want to incentivize intensive growth, then we take an area like this where we very much want to incentivize that urban scale intensive growth. I've talked before about this idea of a point system in lieu of development entitlements. So as we look at potential sending zones in rural areas, I would very much like to see the Innovation District as a whole, obviously including the Mozy site, I'd like to see that analyzed as a potential receiving zone if we can get some type of a point system off the ground. So if the board agrees, if there's consensus, Mr. Merrill, I would like to ask you to analyze that and incorporate any recommendations that you might have for the board as a part of the package, if you will, as you're bringing that to the commission.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Merrill, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments, and glad you brought it up about the comp plan. I think that's extremely important, though, parts of this is in the city.
Yes.
So they would have to request, they'd have to do their own comp plan changes, I guess. We would do ours that affects us. Yeah. So I think the one, this is a great project. This is the kind of project that we all dream about because it's that compact, it's the density buildup. Remember, we talk about that so much. If we, you know, to build rail and do all those things, we have to have density. And this is the perfect project. I'd really like to see this as, and I'd like to see it, I'm not on the transportation groups anymore, but transit-oriented development, this has got to be a factor in this project, mainly because, I mean, that whole Mozy site could be a transit hub, you know, for going down Fowler Avenue, coming off 75. So I just, I'd like to see us, you know, and it's a perfect redevelopment. It's just perfect redevelopment that we talked about. It's a node. It's got all the components there that I think are important for us to move forward and really invest in and incentivize and being a book-in. The other, I am concerned about one thing because the legislature repeatedly is trying to do away with CRAs. And I don't see Brandon or Jim in here, but I think we better move quick. I mean, like, real quick. Because legislature starts earlier, in January this year. How long does it take to set these up?
It does take time. That was one of the concerns that we had as a group because there was a run at it in this session. So we would need to do this on steroids and get this done quickly and lock in as soon as possible, something that, and I think working with our legislative delegation to get some grandfathering on this, I think would be important. I mean, it has all the right ingredients. This is, I mean, we've got a powerhouse of influence. We've got Moffitt, we've got USF, we've got us, the city. I mean, together, we ought to be able to get some sort of recognition for this.
Well, I think there are some members of the delegation that don't like CRAs. So I just think we better move fast and...
Education's a good thing.
And I'll help any way I can, but the city, even if we ended up not using it or didn't do it, at least we'd have it ready to go in case. But I was kind of concerned about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you for all the presentation. It is exciting to see what's possible here. I'm, I've been a proponent of having a CRA in this area for quite some time, so when I was mostly paying attention to what we were doing in the city. So I'm hoping that the current leadership within the city is on the same page as far as the opportunity for growth in this area and the way that we can actually pay for itself along the way and reinvest in it. I do have some concerns. In the illustration, and again, these are concepts, these are issues, but when we take an opportunity to invest in a community and create economic development, we have to be incredibly sensitive to the gentrification of a community that was asked to move there when we've done redevelopment for affordable housing reasons in the past. You know, I don't know how long ago it was, but it was a long time ago, where we moved a large number of people out of East Tampa because we were tearing down a housing facility and building new. And a lot of the folks that were moved out of that area, relocated to this area, you know, have tried to make a home there. If, if what in this, I know it's a concept, but what if we end up with, you know, 750,000 square feet of retail and 700 square feet of units of hotel space, the people that live there could work there, but if they can't afford to live there because we create great opportunity, we've harmed a community that has actually lived in a community that's needed to be redeveloped. And when we finally get to a place where we do, we make it unaffordable for them. So the idea of creating 72 units of housing sounds wonderful, but if it's market rate and it's not affordable, that's not going to be able to provide housing for the people that are going to work in the other elements of this opportunity. So if affordable housing isn't part of this Mozy opportunity because it's such a big place, I'm not going to be excited about the plan. But I am really excited about the opportunity of creating the partnerships that affordable housing can play. I know it's an opportunity zone, so there is some opportunity, but that we also had some legislation this year that actually makes it a little more difficult to do affordable housing without the density bonuses that we were talking about and addressing the land uses that we need. So if, as long as, in the conversation of the long-term plan, that affordable housing is a critical element and the focus of it, because we have such a need there, is a critical element of this and an opportunity for that, I'm all behind this idea because it's well needed. So thank you.
Sure. So there clearly would be that opportunity on the Mozy site as the board of the CRA, the county commission, would develop the plan. But Mozy isn't the sole occasion for affordable housing. So if the Mozy site is the catalyst, the plan for the redevelopment area has to include much more affordable housing. That's why Sarah Combs is part of this group. This is a holistic composite, but you need those catalyst projects. You need something to light the fuse here that hasn't happened organically. They've labored for 30 years at the UACDC and they've done good things, but clearly it hasn't been realized to the extent. So this will catalyze it, but it won't be the place for affordable housing. There will be affordable housing on the site, but there has to be other, other units around, so, yeah.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I would like you to put up the conceptual map again, just so we can look at it.
This one?
Yeah.
No, the overview, yeah. That's, that's it, that's it. So I also, like everyone, I think everyone sees this place as having great potential, a great chance for us to do density, a great chance, I think, still for us to do affordable housing. I look at this as a jewel. I do think that we, I agree that that hasn't happened for a long time and that there's changes that have to be made. I do have concerns. I know this is conceptual, but it's still put up here as a concept and I have concerns about it because I think this is a great opportunity for us to create a place that is truly placemaking, walkable, dense, transit-oriented. And I'm just, the pink up here of the garages and the, I assume those are parking garages because it's all under circulation with these roads. And I think just conceptually, it doesn't look to me as a place that is a placemaking type of place, that is transit-oriented development, right through there. And if you go back to one of the slides, it had the satellite view, the over aerial view of the area, whichever, I don't know which slide that was.
Slide two.
Slide two, thank you. Can we go back to that? Okay, so you see that. I just would like to point out that the CSX tracks, if you look just south of Fowler Avenue and you look over here, you can see the CSX tracks. I've stood on those tracks. I looked at the corner right there at the Botanical Gardens at the University of South Florida from those CSX tracks. The right-of-way extends, as you can see, right there, right through the Mozy site, right out there. It, and tracks can be built out to there. Those tracks are, as we've been talking about, an opportunity to take those straight from downtown across Fowler Avenue and down to Ebor City and down to downtown and through South Tampa and across to, actually even across Bush Boulevard-Limeball. A leg today is operating and goes into the airport, goes over to Odessa, goes up to Lutz. But this is an opportunity for us to connect so much, and that right-of-way is there extending all the way along the University of South Florida. And I, even conceptually, I didn't see that in the design. I also don't see the kind of design, I mean, the university's areas are places where millennials go, where younger families. And just because we talk about affordable housing, it doesn't mean that it isn't people that are working, people that actually, at this point, earn quite a bit and still can't have opportunities, especially younger people. So I just encourage, as we go forward, conceptually with this, that this be recognized, that it, you know, if you're walking past parking garages, that's exactly what you don't want in a walkable community. You don't want to have to go in between parking garages to go to places. You want them, those places to be connected and the parking to be somewhere else. So I'll just throw that out there conceptually and say, I love the idea of making this a placemaking place, a transit-oriented development place, a place that's a real spark and a real wonderful place. And so, but I think it probably needs more than just tweaking on this design here and just like to recognize that going forward.
I'll recognize, Commissioner White, that I have something to say. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Okay. And Mr. Merrill, you did, you did advise, or I guess advise the board to not really view this as an exact site plan, you know, right? Okay.
Correct, yes.
So getting back to the issue of the city of Tampa controlling part of the comprehensive plan elements in the area, certainly if your analysis would indicate that this would be, this area would be viable as a receiving area in a TDR-like program, certainly we could encourage the city of Tampa to incorporate those elements into their piece, right?
Yeah, I think so. You know, this discussion started under the prior administration, and now obviously we have a new administration. But we had from the beginning in mind that the comp plan amendments and any other, so the only thing that the city cannot and the county cannot delegate is zoning.
Right.
But everything else can be done collaboratively, and we would want to do all of this collaboratively, not separately. And so in that respect, the comp plan would be done as a unified effort to accomplish the goals for the entire district.
And if I'm not mistaken, if this area is viable as a receiving zone for a TDR-like program, that would be done through the comprehensive plan. Is that correct? In all likelihood. Because I don't see, I don't see where it would be, I don't see where it would be done at a rezoning level or something like that.
Oh, no, no. No, if that's your question, no, it wouldn't be done at a zoning level.
The creation and the building of it would almost certainly be a comprehensive plan function.
At that level or some other level, but not zoning, yeah.
Right, got it.
Okay. I wish Commissioner Kemp had not have left. Let me say this. This is a concept, I'm going to continue to say, a concept that's been put together. I've been associated with that area out there since 1980, when I transferred from a very small school back to University of South Florida, it was only 8,000 students there. When Flower... When Fowler, Fowler, Fowler was a paved road up to 30th Street going east, and after that it was dirt road. University of South Florida was a bombing area, military sandstorms on the campus, you walked a class sometimes, you had to go back to the student union because you couldn't finish walking a class. I've seen it grow to a very comprehensive area, then falter to where we are today. The reason that we have CDC involved, Commissioner Overman, is to make sure that there's no gentrification out there, that there's affordable housing out there, that people can afford to still live out there, the whole concept, everything, everything that's the reason they're involved and others of us involved. The Mozy site issue is, is only, it's, again, it's a concept. There are a lot of the things that will be done with that site that we've not even began to even look at at this particular point in time. It's important to realize that this is a jewel. We're sitting with a jewel here. Mr. Merrill and myself have met with Mayor Castor. She has not really made a commitment, but from the conversations we have with her, she, I think she's going to be on board. And it's going to take an effort between this board, between the mayor, between the city council, and making this area work. And it can work. The University of South Florida Engineering School now has a place that is no other in this country. And, and I said, the, the, the patent issue came out, I think on June 4th, that not only the University of South Florida leads, the state, the nation in patents, it leads the world. So now we've given a shot in the arm to the, to the engineering area that will be helpful in developing this entire area. It is embarrassing, when I worked at the University of South Florida, to bring a prominent professor to come teach at the university and take them down I-4 and down I-75 and bring them in the back way so they don't have to come down this area. That was embarrassing, totally embarrassing. Mark Sharp has gone out there, put together a lot of people to get involved in this. Mr. Merrill has gotten involved in this, we're going to get the city involved in this. So let's not look at this concept and say, we're going to shoot it down because the mere fact is that there's something out there not with transportation. There will be transit out there. That's the reason why we're hoping that this whole lawsuit gets off the way so we can start doing what we have to do to make sure that transit will be out there. I won't be on this board in 18 months, but I can guarantee that I will be involved some kind of way with what happens out there, because I've been too involved with it in the past. As you all know, but you all don't know, Mark Sharp likes to read. He just brought me a book, Just Starting America. He probably said, "Just Starting Hillsborough County, Tampa." Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to get this done, and it's going to have to be work getting together with Hillsborough County, city of Tampa, public private sector, the whole works to get this accomplished. This is a jewel that we're sitting on. Yes, other deal with comprehensive plans, yes, this is an area that we could talk about putting more people into it, yes, that hopefully will be transit out there, it will be transit out there. The whole concept, we should be really happy about and influencing about and putting everything we possibly can in that area out there. So, having said that, not to give you this, I'm going to motion that we receive the presentation of Up-Down Innovation District and get very enthusiastic about going out there doing that. Commissioner Smith, just.
Okay, we, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller to receive this report, seconded by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Smith, you are recognized.
Thank you, and I know time is running short, but we have a great opportunity here when we have so many people involved in this project here. I'm really happy to see Sarah Combs here, as well as Commissioner Mark Sharp and others. And I know, these are all people who are as concerned as we are about affordable housing and workforce housing in that area. We, we are all very concerned about that throughout the county. It's become a crisis situation, but I very much appreciate the work that the UA, University Area CDC has been doing under Sarah Combs. And I wonder if, understanding, and with your experience, Commissioner Sharp, about how we get when we're near lunch, if you could briefly explain to us the extent of affordable housing throughout that area, affordable as well as workforce, might put us at ease in terms of how we use the Mozy site.
In just 30 seconds, and my name is Mark Sharp, Executive Director of the Tampa Innovation Partnership, and I do want to appreciate the fact that Sarah Combs is here, and Sarah serves on the board of Tampa Innovation Partnership. We also serve on the board of the UACDC. We are working collectively together. Obviously, she has the, the point on this issue of workforce housing, but we're working very closely with our collaborative partners. We have development partners from the east side of our innovation district to the west side who are now working with us on workforce housing concepts, to include the old Grand Prix, which is on 275 in Barris. That is now going to be redeveloped into a 500-unit workforce housing development. That's Claire, I know some of you know Claire, she's done some student housing projects, well, she's working on workforce housing. So, we're, that's a very high priority. We also have a committee within our organization which is taking the issue of gentrification head-on. So we are working on that issue with our partners, members of Crossover Church, many other organizations, working together to make sure that as we grow this innovation district, as we create jobs, that Commissioner Overman was very right on point, that with those jobs, the, the individuals who live in our community will have an opportunity to work in those jobs. We have the Tech Hire Grant, and we are working closely with our partners on Tech Hire. Want to thank Commissioner Miller for all he's done, the leadership, sir, that you've displayed in this issue, we really appreciate, and, and we're not going to let you down. We've got 18 months, I know that, the administrator, Mike Merrill, has been with us from the very beginning. He was instrumental in setting aside the $2 million back in 2015, which the county still holds the bulk of, for the planning, for the purposes of bringing this together. He worked closely with the city of Tampa and beginning the conversation, maybe even creating at some point NMOU between the city and the, and the county. We met with the mayor last week, we met with Chris Bowen, the mall leader, in fact, we were with the mall ownership team yesterday. Remember, the mall sits in an opportunity zone. The mall ownership thrilled to be partnering with the county, and, and I can tell you, no one more than Chris Bowen has spoken about the importance of what we do all along Fowler, from Mozy to the mall, the two tip-ins. So, I'm on, I said 30 seconds, I'm going to stop, but yes, ma'am, we're doing all those things, and I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Commissioner Smith, you still have the floor, if you need?
Thank you very much, I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Miller.
Let me say this, and I'll be done. We're talking about affordable housing. This commission has been talking about affordable housing more intently now than ever before. Again, this is a partnership that we'll be doing with the city, but if you read the paper day before yesterday, Mayor Castor is appointing an affordable housing task force that will be looking at affordable housing within the city limits. So, we only won't be talking about affordable housing within Hillsborough County, right next, right across the street on Fowler is the city limits, I'm quite sure they'll be talking about it there also. So we'll be working collaboratively with the mayor and the city council, the city of Tampa concerning affordable housing.
Great. Commissioner Sharp, if you could come to the podium?
Yes, sir.
County staff knows what I'm trying to accomplish, and, and it would involve, it would be a TDR-like program. It would involve multiple receiving zones, not just the innovation district. So I would just ask that if, if it's shown to be viable, I would just humbly ask that you and your team embrace it and, and work with county staff.
Commissioner White, we will wholeheartedly embrace the concept. We want to be a receiving zone in many ways, so thank you, sir.
Fantastic, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, let's, let's vote on receiving this report.
Motion carried five to zero.
So with your concurrence, we'll bring back to you at your next meeting in June, a timetable and milestones to get this thing down the road here, recognizing the time is of the essence, so. Thank you very much for your support, and thank you, everybody. That just leaves one remaining time, certain G1, which is the report on sustainable stormwater program, and so, board's pleasure, should we go ahead and take this one and?
Well, yeah, we need to, because Commissioner White said he had to leave, and how much time, we don't?
It's really just, it, we've already had the workshop, this should be quick, just, you wanted us to show you what the phase in of the fees would look like, and that's all we really need, is just direction on that.
We have, we have some more work.
There's a couple other items, but.
We'll be done in about another 30 minutes, hopefully.
Go ahead, John.
We're having a little technical difficulty, but I can refer, information's in the documents. John Lyons, Public Works Administrator. Commissioners, you had asked us at the May 1st workshop to come back with some information on phasing in the new assessment rates, phasing the increased level of service, and also phasing out the general fund portion of the stormwater program. If we reference to slide number four in the presentation or in the backup, it's on page four, I think, of the, excuse me, it's not on page four. Showing, yeah, page four of the overall document. That shows there, the total program going from a $43 million program to about an $82 million program ultimately, and that would, that would include increased levels of service for capital, and, I think that is open. And, under that scenario, hopefully this graphic will pop open. So, so we stuck with the same concept of doing that, of, of moving to the fully funded by assessment stormwater program. On slide number five in the presentation materials, that graphic shows a phase-in process over three years of how we would go from the, okay, there we go. This slide represents how the whole program would be phased in. Currently, we're about $42.6 million a year. The first year would go to $54.1 million, $69.9 million, to the $81.7 million to become at that sustainable rate. And with that, we would also, each of these colors of the, of the graphic represent the funding that would go into each piece, and we basically initially have ramped that up equally amongst the three areas of work that would be accomplished. Backwards. So, this slide represents the proposed revenue phase-in. The color in blue is the existing general fund, it's about $20 million annually that goes into the program, and we phased that out over three years. And so what happens is, the growth in the assessment itself would grow a little bit faster than normal because of the phasing out of that general fund revenue. What does that relieve general fund uses do? It could be the annual operating cost for up to four to five new fire stations, parks and rec facilities and programs, or additional, and/or additional code enforcement officers. So we talked earlier about, this is how we go from the existing methodology to a tiered rate structure, including full cost recovery of the expenses, additional maintenance and additional capital. So the $42 average assessment today would be split into three categories, a small, medium, and large home. Ultimately, you would get to a rate of $106, $193, and $295 respectively at the end of the third-year phase-in. This assessment, this slide represents that assessment, so the, the medium house would go from 42 to 92, to 142 to 193 in the third year. So it shows how that would do respectively for the small, medium, and large homes as well. On the commercial assessment, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, it rolls in the same way. It would just be an increment of splitting the third difference over the period of three years as well. This still keeps the rate at the $193 plus or minus that we talked about earlier, where we want to get to. Keeps us moving in the right direction in doing that. The overall impact in a tiered 10-year program, kind of going back to the one graphic, is there's about a $30 million difference in the revenue by phasing it in over the three-year period. So the benefits of a sustainable system, we just want to reinforce this, it's improved water quality, reduced flood risk, increased system reliability that keeps the roadways open, and it also keeps us in a place where we're replacing failing infrastructure from a reactionary mode into a proactive mode. The additional things that we're looking at doing as well, if you recall when the ELAP presentation was done last week, I believe, there was a mention in there about additional land acquisition, the benefit to stormwater, to water quality, all those things as well. We're having conversations with the ELAP folks, with Forest, and conceptually looking at larger property acquisitions, depending on where they're at, there's potential that we could merge, that we could collaborate with stormwater money along with ELAP money to share purchase of a property and potentially redevelop part of that property into a stormwater function to improve water quality and do some flood control projects as well. We'll have further conversations with that and can provide information back to the board as that occurs. We're also looking, as we move ahead, we'll have to have enhanced community engagement. This kind of falls into the next steps. At the next board meeting, we need you to do three things. We need you to set a public hearing, ask the county attorney to draft a public hearing notice, that will generate a resolution ultimately. The other thing that'll do is, we have to set a maximum rate, so as an example, and it'll be a little bit more complex than that, what it would go into the notice to the customers, but that, where we would set that rate at $193 if so desire, and then we would also establish what the rate would be in the first year of that program, and those notices would go out to about 300,000 property owners. We need to take that action at the next board meeting. This outlines that timeline, on the 19th, we would request the public hearing, we would send out the mailers, so, we prepare those mailers and send those out in the first part of July. Conceptually, that's enough information, that we're probably going to send out a letter as opposed to a postcard this time, and conduct the public hearing on August 7th, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I see no questions, what's your pleasure? Move the received report by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Smith. See you for the discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried four to zero.
So, so we'd be setting the rates at the maximum for the notice, and then the three-year increment in, in doing that then?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, so, three-year phase-in with a maximum rate of $193.
For the medium-sized house.
For medium-sized house.
There'll be deep, more detail for commercial and the other properties as well.
Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Very quick, John.
Yes.
Are you going to enlarge the pipes?
Where we can, that, that would take a permit change, so places where there's substandard pipes, that would be part of the project analysis. We wouldn't necessarily replace them in kind. As part of the, those local, regional, and intermediate-type projects, that analysis would take place, but we can't, we can't just enlarge a pipe to enlarge a pipe, that's...
But if you go into an area, because I'm just saying in the city, I will tell you that that's a consistent issue across the board when they've gone in areas, the pipes are corroded, of course, but they're too small.
Yes, and we would look at that as part of the design process, you know, there's going to be areas where it's going to be like-for-like, other areas where we would look at a project that's going to require design and permitting to do that.
And then you may want to talk to George, because Tampa Bay Water is talking about a short-term fix in South County, increasing the flow, and if the pipes aren't big enough, I think it's going to be a huge problem.
Sure.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
This is not my area of expertise by any stretch, so I'm going to ask you probably a stupid question, but, but if you go back to the slide that talked about the project allocation plan, where you, where you show the increases over what looks like three years, and then it stabilizes?
Yes.
Is the difference between, for example, on the flood water and quality and hazard mitigation? The difference between the 42 and the 81 obviously is a, is a factor of, of the increased fee.
Yes.
But is that the deficit of where we are in terms of infrastructure that we haven't paid for over the last several years?
So in total, if you, if, the area of the slide... So in total, if you, if the area of the slide, if you were to take the dollars per year versus the number of years, the grand total of all the funding that's represented on this slide is about 800, about $780 million plus or minus. The allocation of how we've shown this is, it's a little bit easier to ramp up and get contracting to replace those like-for-like pipes that are failing, so that's one component of it. We're looking at bringing in contractors to assist us in the maintenance side of things. And then what you see is a little bit slower growth in those flood and water quality projects as it goes through time, because those typically take design and permitting and potentially land acquisition to implement those. So it's like a typical construction project, the cash flow at the beginning is a little bit thinner, and then it gets heavier at the end. It's an S-curve type of process. I hope that answered your question.
No, it did. It helps me understand, because I was hesitant on the whole three-year phase-in thing, but if you don't have the project pipeline.
Yes.
Like a better term, but pipeline and workforce actually ready to actually spend all those funds, then that makes more sense on the phase-in rather than, we just don't want to pay for it all along.
So it's exactly similar to a transportation project where we can resurface fairly quickly. If we have to do an intersection project, we have to design it.
Design it and change it, yeah. Because I do notice that in the case of the asset preservation line, you know, in '22, it looks like we sort of stabilize out in terms of the expenditures and revenues, but also it, the amount that we need to spend declines. Am I reading that correctly?
What we're predicting is, we're kind of getting that backlog of terrible infrastructure taken care of initially, and then we get to a steady state, and we're predicting that this is our steady state. As other infrastructure ages, then it'll be replaced in a sequential manner in doing that.
Assuming climate change doesn't take us all out along the way, so we're good.
A lot of basic assumptions, yes.
But thank you. That very helps. Thanks.
Mr. Merrill.
Thank you, John. That just leaves Commissioner Section, Commissioner Section Board Appointments, and then the item on the flag, rainbow flag. So appointments first.
Yes.
F1.
Choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Number one.
Commissioner Merman.
That's a tough one. You only got four people here. One.
Commissioner Smith.
One.
And Commissioner Overman.
One.
It will be Margaret Basket. Your next board is your Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Mr. Alanya was placed on the agenda in error. If the Tampa Housing Authority is going to appoint him, he will be on the next agenda. So it will be Joseph Pelt.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question? Okay, so we only have one person here. The next one, we have somebody that's missed four of nine meetings, which leaves only one person. Next person, they missed 11 of 25 meetings. That's the only applicant. The next one, four of 12 meetings, the only applicant. I think we need to re-advertise all four.
Okay, now the last.
I want to make a motion to do that.
Okay. The last board, the Council on Aging, we actually don't advertise for that position, but we can ask the agency to appoint somebody else.
Well, and then I would suggest they call the commissioners' offices and maybe ask for suggestions, because we're all out in the field a lot, and we can certainly add to the conversation.
So you made a motion?
I made a motion to send the four back for more applicants.
The four being?
Portable Housing, Anti-Bullying, Child Care Facilities Advisory Board, and the Council on Aging.
Have motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Overman, to re-advertise those positions. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried 4 to 0.
Then I'll move to confirm the one we did do.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to confirm the one we just approved. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried 4 to 0.
G1.
Okay, we never asked for that.
We did G1 already? Okay, all right. Sorry about that, didn't check it off. We're now going to F6, which is a request to recognize LGBT Pride Month by flying the rainbow flag. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank, oops. Thank you, Chair. I'm very glad to see that we are celebrating fairness, equality, diversity, and the richness of our community. You know, it's interesting, the rainbow flag, when you're a kid, when you're a child, a rainbow is something you see as hope and love, and all of the wonderful things that you see as a child as being a wonderful thing. So I am very excited to support the motion to support and fly the rainbow flag.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have the item introduced, and Commissioner Overman, you recognize Commissioner Miller.
I'm going to make an amendment to the motion that we fly this flag every June, heads forth of February in Hillsborough County. That's my amendment to the motion.
Second.
Yeah, you hear, we got to.
Second.
Okay, so we have motion by Commissioner Overman on the main item, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and now we have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Smith, and we'll take up the amendment first. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Please record your vote on the amendment.
Motion carried 4 to 0.
And now we're on the motion as amended. No remarks? Everybody okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none, record your, please record your vote.
Motion carried 4 to 0.
It will be flown every June. Thank you.
You need your item.
We're not done yet. Hold on. Hold on, do we get there? Mr. Merrill, you recognize?
Yes, that leaves future discussion items.
Now we're future discussion.
I thought you were leaving me. So just quickly, now that the government, governor has signed the bill to eliminate the county's Civil Service Board, we have less than four months to put a whole new system in place by October 1st to replace civil service. And I know we all want to make sure that this replacement system gives our employees a fair system of job protection, so I'd like to have staff just bring back a report to the next BOCC meeting for board discussion about what that process will be for setting up the new system, and what the timeline might be for accomplishing this change, and how the board will be updated along the way.
Mr. Merrill, thank you. Mr. Merrill, didn't we just, wasn't something set up from Human Resources concerning this process recently?
So it's, we've been working with all of the folks for a number of months to be prepared for it, so we're happy to bring a report. The amendment to the Act specified, though, how it was to be handled, so we're just implementing what the Act provided for arbitration.
I would like to see the timeline, whether this is going to be an ordinance that requires a public hearing or?
No.
No?
No, the Civil Service Act, as it was amended, specified that there'd be arbitration, and so we have been implementing that with all the constitutional offices and to be prepared for October 1st. So that, that's not our decision. That's how the Civil Service Act was amended, to do arbitration. It's in the language of the amendment.
That there will be a single arbiter.
That we will use arbitration as the method for, as a substitute for the Civil Service Board.
All right, I would like to see a report of that system.
Sure, absolutely.
The timeline.
Oh, yes, no, we'll bring that back.
Implementation.
But my point is, we're doing it within what was specified in the amendment to the Civil Service Act. We don't have discretion. It says arbitration. We will bring back to you a report that lays out how we're going to implement that. That was my point.
Right, okay.
And just to clarify, it requires that the system be uniform for all agencies. That's the word that's utilized, is uniform.
Right.
Yes, and it specifies that the system will be substantially similar to the Civil Service Board, to what the Civil Service Board had.
Yes, right.
That's correct.
Any other P-items? Seeing none, we adjourn.